Hey, you can want me some paper.
Did you get the number? I just sent it to you.
Oh, listen to my phone.
I need a refund. They say do not, they say do not return to the original manufacturer. I need a refund. Now, I'll tell my grandkids, any day, the ones that made them, they can go. They seem smarter than both of them.
The pens don't even work.
Do you have to have your own?
I guess so.
I'll take the other one while you take this one.
Hold on. You can have this one.
Hey, how are you?
All right, all right.
What's up?
Hey, baby, how you doing?
I'm fine.
How are you?
I'm fine. Let me just put it in there so I can have everything together. Thank you. You're so welcome. Next week is gonna be Vegas. I think it was the last. What you cooking? They're cooking some ribs. Hamburgel. You still see them? Bell pepper making you smell like you at a restaurant. Girl, that stuff just smells so good. And they're like, what you cooking? They're just telling us. It's about the wrong. Yeah, that'd be eating, that'd be eating. Oh, my God, like a restaurant. Oh, it wasn't about. Did you ready?
Yeah, so just got announced it?
Yeah, don't announce. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Your meeting of the Pontiac City Council for July twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two is hereby called to order at six oh three P. M. Pastor Councilman Parker, you have the floor to introduce this evening's invocation.
Thank you, sir. I would like to introduce invited to Pastor Emeritus Roger Jackson of now previously Providence Missionary Baptist Church.
Thank you, Pastor Parker, to our mayor and our president of the council. I come for the opening prayer. We bow our heads in humble submission. And to the God who created all things. And with foreknowledge of the fall of man, he provided for us a Savior and the person of his son, Jesus Christ. It is through him that we come asking your blessing upon these men and women of this council. And we have been, who have been chosen and ordained by God through the democratic process to lead the city of Pontiac to another level and another dimension. We thank them for that and looking forward to their leadership. We ask your blessings upon them, Lord. That you bless them and give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that is needed for our great city. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. We remember those that our community has lost since we gathered last. We have names listed here in this evening's chambers. Noreen Anderson, James Bullock, Imogene Christ, Derek Crudup, Leola Curry, R. L. Davis, Ruthie May Dow, Tanisha Gee, Elmore Gully, Jr., Ronald Hargode, Jr., Amelia Mosley, Barbara Ray Sellers, Beulah Simpson, Alonso Thomas, Louise Williams, and in recent days, Mr. Esmo T. Woods, longtime historian for our community, the first African American to serve as a class president at what was then Pontiac High School, before there were two separate high schools. A remarkable human being that many of us on this body and in this community have an honor to know. He was eighty-nine years old at his passing in recent days. Please join us in a moment of silence as we remember them and those that you and your family and neighborhood have lost as well. Thank you. You, of course, may be seated. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
James.
Present.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford. Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I will forego a motion to excuse Councilwoman Rutherford since we know that she is with us. Quorum being established, we proceed now. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Council Pro Tem Carrington. That motion is now before us. I have one minor amendment to the agenda, but I wanted to first hear from colleagues if anyone had any changes that you wish to see. We heard from State Representative Brenda Carter this morning with some very positive news for our community, and she's requested a special presentation to be able to share this announcement with the community. So could I please have a motion to add a special presentation which would come after the approval of the consent agenda but before discussion? And a presentation on a state budgetary outcome from State Representative Brenda Carter.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Goodman, that we amend the agenda to add that special presentation. I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Rutherford as present and voting. And with that, any discussion on that amendment where we're adding that special presentation? Hearing no discussion on the amendment, roll call on approval of that amendment to the agenda, Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The agenda's been amended. Are there any other amendments? We're back to the main motion, the agenda as updated. Any other questions, corrections, additions, deletions? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting as amended. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. We now are at the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington, that we adopt this evening's consent agenda. It has last week's council meeting minutes in it, not debatable, so therefore, roll call on approval. Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. We are now at the special presentation that we amended under the agenda. We welcome the Honorable Brenda Carter, State Representative for Michigan's district that includes the entire city of Pontiac. For a special presentation, you have the floor.
Good evening, Council President, Pontiac City Council, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, everyone in the room, and everybody that's listening. Those of you who know me know that I came to Pontiac in nineteen ninety-eight on a mission, and that mission is to work with the development, for the development of our youth. Things like the kids going to Japan, Husky Brigade winning the international championship. But alongside of this route, I worked with a very phenomenal human being, and I watched how this person nurtured our children, doing things like the Back to School Rally, doing the Youth Coalition, doing the so many things, coming up to Lansing with these young people and inspiring them to do, to be the best that they could be. I watched this individual work twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, investing in our most precious asset, our youth. So when this year's budget came, although I advocated for quite a few things, because not only were I successful at getting a budgetary appropriation for this organization, this nonprofit, I was also successful in dealing with some of the things we're dealing with, our youth and the mental health issues. So our community health was also a very large recipient of this year's budget. But for this presentation, I would ask that the recipient, the two thousand and twenty-two recipient, of one half million dollars go out to Mr. Cano Phillips of the Clarence E. Phillips Ascend Foundation.
So on behalf of the state of Michigan, we would like to present you with half a million dollars so you could continue the work that you've been doing in this community for so long. And Council President, I ask, I'm the ask, can Mr. Phillips say a couple of things?
Oh, most definitely. Yes, sir, and we encourage the use of the microphone so those watching at home can get the full benefit and those watching the recorded version. I do want to do a housekeeping note that we received an update from our cable department from the city of Pontiac that upgrades are happening with Comcast and ATT U-verse over the next Day Plus. So if you have any interruption with services, we apologize, but hopefully it's streaming now and live now and that everyone can see this amazing news and hear the amazing update.
Thank you so much, President McGinnis. Good evening to City Council. Good evening to the mayor. You know, when we started out this mission with the Ascend Foundation back in two thousand and eleven, it was shortly after my father passed away. And you know, and the whole purpose of us even putting a foundation in place was to go ahead and put the things that he wanted to get done while he was in office but was unable to. And so the answer seemed to be a nonprofit organization, something that was gonna go ahead and give back and fight for the empowerment of children. In Pontiac, there's been a nasty dynamic where it's like we have kids running around here with this breeding, this whole, this whole dynamic of hopelessness. You know, we're losing children left and right to the system. We have children that are not even maximizing their academic potential inside the classrooms. So it was only important and imperative that we go ahead and invest into our future. And our future were those children. And the thing about our children, back in the day when I was coming up, we had this dynamic where we actually took care of our neighborhood. You know, where the village raised our children, wasn't just the job of everyone inside that household. And it's because of that, somewhere down the line, we lost it. And while we're losing it, it seems like its time has gone by, it seemed like it's become easier and easier for people to go ahead and separate themselves from that dynamic. In what world is it okay for us to go ahead and leave our kids out to the wolves? And that's what's happening here. So the thought process is to go ahead and put a suite of programs in place, something that was gonna go ahead and be able to grab kids in the educational system, something that they can go ahead and look forward to, to go ahead and invest into their lives, their futures. Make sure we give them job readiness skills, life preparedness skills, teach them about the rights and wrong, mentorship, show them that there's some other things out there that's just a lot better than some of the negatives that they pull in the streets. I'm never gonna shoot at the streets all the way because the streets had a big investment in me being what I am today, too. It was a learning capacity that came with that. But unfortunately, it used to be a code back then.
She code.
The code is gone. And because of that, that's the reason why it was more important for us to go ahead and fight hard, to go ahead and dig our feet into the sand to give these kids everything that we got to make sure they're gonna go ahead and be successful in this world. So that's what happened with Ascend. And to you, Representative Carter, words can't express how grateful and appreciative I am of you to go ahead and carry on this fight from a school district standpoint, starting off, and to catapult yourself onto the state level, to go ahead and fight inside those chambers. And we see what those chambers have looked like over the past few years. You know, the social racial injustice piece is out of control. This Republican dynamic against Democratic dynamic is out of control. We had insurrections sitting right here in our state Capitol. That is the reason why it's important to have somebody who's gonna roll up their sleeves and fight through whatever it is that's gonna be thrown at them, because unfortunately, no, excuse me, fortunately, we need your voice. We need your voice to go ahead and speak on behalf of the people that you represent. The people that you represent is the people of Pontiac. I know you got a few other cities, but Pontiac is the heart, body, and soul of this to me. And that's what you give us. So on behalf of the Clarence E. Phillips Ascend Foundation, and what this half a million dollars is gonna go ahead and do to ensure that we're able to go ahead and push and catapult our programs to new heights, and also to be able to expand all the way from high school all the way through to preschool, that's what this money's gonna go and help us do. And excuse me, left something out, too. So like I said, Representative Carter, on behalf of the Clarence E. Phillips Ascend Foundation, we'd like to present to you the two thousand and twenty-two Spirit of the Cause Award to State Representative Brenda Carter for your incredible service, continued humanitarian contributions, and philanthropic fight for the city of Pontiac and beyond. Five hundred thousand dollars secured for the community of Pontiac to make sure we're gonna go and be able to excel services to the children of this community. Ladies and gentlemen, I ask that you please put your hands together for that. Keep fighting. You keep fighting. You know what this looks like statewide, countywide, and citywide. Thank you for all of you for digging in. I know this is not an easy job, you know? Think about Pontiac, I love our community, but we can be rough here. Rough, hard, you know? Well, you see what they did to Jesus Christ, so think about what they tried to go and do to you all. But the reality is, I appreciate everything that you represent. So you keep fighting that same fight, Representative Carter. Thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, President. Thank you.
On behalf of the Pontiac City Council and the entire city of Pontiac, congratulations to the Ascend Foundation and their leader, Mr. Phillips, for the appropriation that was secured by our State Representative Brenda Carter from the state of Michigan for five hundred thousand dollars. With that, feedback and questions from our body. Pro Tem Carrington, you have the floor.
Well, President, I guess I think you summed it up. That was remarkable, and I actually like to thank State Representative Brenda Carter. You've definitely been a champion for our community, and you couldn't have chosen a better nonprofit to give a half a million dollars to congratulate to the Ascend Foundation. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rutherford, you have the floor.
To whom much is given, much is required. Cano Phillips, I've known you since I was sixteen years old, and you have been a leader, a fighter for the underdog. I am living proof that love, investment, time, and sacrifice does actually pay off. My daughter is living proof that love, sacrifice, and time is a payoff, because the Ascend Organization doesn't just help children graduate and to be professional, it shows them how to be national-born leaders. So to me, on a personal note, you know how I feel about you, Kay, and on a professional note, you are amazing, and congratulations.
Councilman Goodman.
I also want to just, you know, stack on top of that. Cano, you personally have, you know, been helpful for me growing up in, say, a Pontiac, especially, you know, once I hit close to adult years. And so I think that you are one of the most, you and your organization were the most deserving of this because of what you're able to do for this community. I mean, just myself being able to receive a scholarship from you when I was a senior, those things are really important and really send shockwaves through our communities in a very positive way. So again, you and your organization are one of the most deserving.
Mayor Grimal.
Well, at risk of being redundant with my colleagues on council, you know, I've known you for a while, not as long as Mel has, but you do amazing work in the community. You've done amazing work in the community for your whole adult life and probably even earlier than that, and that's true not just through the Ascend Foundation, although the Ascend Foundation does truly remarkable work, transformational work with our young people, but you personally, even outside of the Ascend Foundation, do amazing work and are an incredible leader. So I know that you're gonna use these funds to do even more amazing work. I just want to commend you, Cano, for your leadership, for your heart for our community, and for everything you do. And I also want to recognize Representative Carter's leadership and her advocacy for our community, including but not limited to securing these funds for the Ascend Foundation. Thank you both. You're both amazing, incredible leaders. I tip my hat to you, and I truly admire the amazing work that both of you do.
Others that wish to have the floor? I do want to point out before we depart that the Honorable Clarence Phillips was a member of this body, a longtime city councilman representing District Five, I believe, and a council president in his own right. He served as state representative for our district in the state of Michigan Legislature and as mayor of this honorable city. So I want to, as you do, pay tribute, legacy, and honor to his work, his life, by the very namesake of your organization, but also the amazing work that you do. Congratulations again. Thank you, Representative Carter, for bringing this special presentation tonight.
Thank you.
With that, we move to discussion items. The first of three discussions is Art Dunlap Park Enhancement Opportunities. This is a discussion item that Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford requested that we have on this evening's agenda. She has also got some slides. When I merged her PowerPoint with mine, what were very, very beautiful slides are just solid slides. They're not as colorful as the ones you made. They've got the pictures, but doesn't have the green background, so I just want to apologize to just the way the technology rumbles. Would you like to present the information you had first, and then we can open it up for discussion?
Oh, yes. Art Dunlap, the soul of the community. Why are parks so important? Parks and recreation have three values that make them essential services to the community. One, economic value. Two, health and environmental benefits. Three, social importance. Just as water, sewer, and public safeties are considered an essential public service, parks are virtually importantly, rightly important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in the community, ensuring the health of families and youth, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and a region. There are no communities that pride themselves on their quality of life, promote themselves as a desirable location for business or to relocate or maintain that they are environmental stewards, excuse me, of their natural resources, without such communities having a robust, active system of parks and recreation programs for the public use and enjoyment. Economic value. Parks improve the local tax base and increase property values. It has proven that private property values increase the value of private property owned and the closers as such, the land is to the parks. This increases in private property value due to the proximity of the parks to increase property tax revenues and improves local. Social importance. Social importance, parks are a tangible reflection of the quality of life in a community. They provide identity for citizens and are a major factor in the perception of quality of life in any given community. Parks and recreational services are often cited as one of the most important factors and surveys of how livable communities are. Parks provide gathering places for families and social groups, as well as for individuals of all ages and economic stands, regardless of their ability to pay for access. The Art Dunlap History. Art Dunlap is a community park named after Art Dunlap, who was known as a community activist. He believed that all children needed a place that was safe, community-focused, and that thrived on the true theme of the South Side Pride. This is the current condition of the Art Dunlap Park. If you look at the picture that you see, all of those features have to be removed because they are not eighty, excuse me, they are not. they are not compliant with the A S T M or the C P A standards for children to play on. Here's my vision for the future. This is the two- to five-year equipment that we can actually buy for the park. As you see, they're projected different price ranges. That's two to five years where this equipment will actually last. The reason why I'm giving you a variety of what we could actually do is because if we put those in the right place, in the right location, they can last up to two to five years. But let's dream bigger. We also have the five-to-12-year range. Those features can also be put into that park as well, so that the children have viable workouts places, viable places that they can actually thrive and meet in the community. That's why the five-to-12-year plan can be also in place. The basketball rim replacement ideas. Do you remember when Art Dunlap was the center point of all basketball on the South Side? How did it make you feel when you were there and you seen the basketball shoe out, or the contest, or when you saw Frank and Cappy Russell there? It made you feel like you were part of the South Side Pride? That is why basketball is not just something to do. It is a fundamental way of life. It changes families to give them the opportunity. That's why the rims must and have to be replaced. The benefits to the District and the District One community. Number one, it would give the children in District One a central location for park activities. Number two, it will allow multiple usage of the parks, such as basketball tournaments, meetup and eat-up, and cheer competitions, to name a few. Number three, it will be a beacon of hope that it was always meant to be. The South Side is the pride of the city of Pontiac. District One is the pride of the city of Pontiac, and yet there are absolutely no parks that are up to standard or up to cold that we can currently play at and our children can currently thrive. The estimation and cost of this. The estimation of redoing and revitalizing the park can be up to seventy-two thousand to eighty thousand dollars. The purpose of this is simple, is to reintroduce an idea where this park can be not just simple, but a state-of-the-art place where all people can thrive. My enthusiasm is real. It's genuine because District One needs this, and we need a sense of community. And thank you.
Others that wish to be recognized. Mayor Grimal.
Well, first and most importantly, I want to thank you, Councilwoman, for your advocacy. I know that we've had a number of conversations around this. It's a really important project and an important priority for the city as a whole, certainly for you and for council, but also for our administration. And you're absolutely right about there not being a park on the South Side that is truly up to snuff, as they say. And I would go further and say that there are very few, if any, parks in the city that are really up to snuff. We are fortunate that we have a Parks Master Plan that was approved last year, and we're focused and committed to trying to bring the resources to bear to improve a number of parks around the city. We certainly want to make sure that there's at least one park in every city council district that that district can be proud of in very short order, and then go from there in terms of, over time, adding more and more parks to the list of parks here in the city that are in compliance with the Master Plan vision for parks. We had a promising meeting this morning. I know I provided you with an update on that. We met Alex Bornghesser and I with a potential donor around trying to raise funds for Art Dunlap Park. And, you know, with permission from President McGinnis, certainly, I think Ms. Bornghesser can share some updates about the discussion this morning and about the follow-up email that she sent to that prospective donor about possible staging of improvements to that park, hopefully beginning this late summer, early fall, and then continuing in the next year to try to really make some important infrastructure improvements. But I defer to your discretion, President McGinnis, as to whether you'd like that update.
Thank you. So as the mayor mentioned, we met with a very promising donor this morning to discuss potential park improvements and upgrades to Art Dunlap with the idea of a new vision for a vibrant and sustainable park system in the city of Pontiac. This park in particular has an accessibility rating of two, which is very low, and it's a primary, sorry, a little taller, a primary objective to create greater accessibility and to become ADA compliant from the walkway through the play structure and recreation area. We sent out a city engineer to provide preliminary cost estimates for all of the park improvements as listed in the D N R-approved Parks and Rec Master Plan. This includes parallel parking spaces, access from the existing sidewalk, resurfacing of the basketball courts, updating and replacing the playground equipment, new fencing around the park and the basketball courts, new basketball pools and hoops, the pruning of mature vegetation, new benches and picnic tables, then also some of the administrative costs, which are a 10% contingency fee or cost, professional engineering services, and construction services. The total estimated cost for all of those renovations at once is actually two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, and we did take that figure to the donor with the idea of a phased approach, understanding that Michigan weather would require a phased approach for those improvements. We obviously can't put shovels in the ground when there's snow on it and it's frozen. So our Phase One would include, which would happen in the fall if all goes as planned, would include new basketball pools and hoops, resurfacing of the basketball courts, updating and replacing the playground equipment, and ADA-compliant access paths from the sidewalk to the recreation and play areas. And then Phase Two, once everything thaws and spring is upon us, would include establishing parking spaces along South Boulevard, new benches and picnic tables, new fencing around the park and the courts, and pruning of any vegetation that would sprout due to spring. So that is the proposal that we provided to the funder this morning, and we're waiting to hear back about any sort of decisions or questions that the funder might have.
Other discussion. A quick question for Councilwoman James and anyone else that might be familiar with this. Is the city required to remove non-ADA-compliant play structures? I saw, I identified in Art Dunlap Park a few that, you know, are no longer considered compliant for those who would utilize a playground with disabilities. Does that mean they must be decommissioned, or are they allowed to stand there in addition to other features? I just don't know that answer, and I was curious if we've crossed that bridge yet.
Yeah, they are allowed to stay, but any new playscape or playground equipment that is installed would have to be compliant. But yes, they are allowed to stay.
Thank you for that. And would that apply to if something was moved, for example, from Art Dunlap Park? I saw the caterpillar, which is, I like that caterpillar. That, are we allowed to install that in another park where there's a lot more room? Because I recognize that Art Dunlap Park has a limited footprint, but some of our larger, do we think that that might also warp the reuse of some of these sort of old-school playground equipment?
In general, we found that trying to move playground equipment is more expensive than actually purchasing new ones. We did, we were able to do that. Pleasant Ridge, as you, I don't know if you remember, but Pleasant Ridge gave the city of Pontiac a playscape that's currently at North Kiwanis Park. And that playscape, the cost to install that playscape, it's astronomical. So generally, the answer would be it's just the cost, right. Right.
Thank you for that context. Councilwoman Rutherford.
Mayor Grimal, so with the proposed donor, is there a timeline that we have set to get a response?
Mayor Grimal.
We were reluctant, as you might imagine, to impose a strict deadline to hear back from him, but our hope is to hear back in the next couple of weeks. There are some other participants in his venture that he needs to connect with. But I thought I would follow up with him early next week and at least, you know, ask if he's had an opportunity to have some of those conversations. So I thought we'd give him a week before I personally follow up with a phone call to him. But our hope is that we'll have a sense of where he's at in the next couple of weeks here. So I thought I'd prompt him a week from now, and then my guess is he won't have an answer at that point, but then I'll say, you know, I'll plan on following up in another week. And so that would take us to August 8th, 9th timeframe.
Follow-up, Councilwoman Rutherford.
Thank you. My other follow-up is have we reached out to Samino Scott and the Pontiac Community Impact Collective, any of those people?
I haven't yet, and I know that you had a conversation with him. So Alex and I have reflected on that, and I thought I'd follow up with him later this week as well.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman James, you have the floor.
Yes, I'd like to say it's a great plan, and I'd like to say to Councilwoman Rutherford, we're gonna claim it. We're gonna claim that the donor will approve both Phase One and Phase Two so that we can get started with it, because, you know, basketball has such a phenomenal place in this city. And as a president of Friends of Pontiac Parks and working with the parks for the last 10 years, you know, I saw the difference it made when Councilwoman Carrington wrote the grant to resurface the park at Oakland. And since that has happened, all of the phenomenal basketball events that have taken place out there are just beautiful. And Art Dunlap is like that. I mean, I have passed there on Sundays and have seen 25 boys, all ages, you know, little fellas out there, you know? And it's, so it's a phenomenal place, and we really, really need to get, you know, these upgrades. It's one thing just to clean it up, but it's something else to visualize what it could be. And so I really support this project. And again, Councilwoman Rutherford, we are going to claim it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other discussion. Hearing our further discussion, thank you. We are next at the Galloway Lake Park easement concerns. Galloway Lake Park easement concerns. Councilwoman James, you brought this last week, and we had a robust discussion. Would you like the floor first to revisit this ongoing concern?
No, I'm comfortable with having the mayor just go ahead and lead off. He's doing some really good investigation on it, and I think we are making progress. So I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Mayor Grimal, and then Councilman Parker.
Yeah, thank you, President McGinnis and Councilwoman James. As we discussed a week ago, the previous mayor executed some easements, the granted easements to the Water Resources Commission in Galloway Lake Park. The easements themselves indicate that there were four temporary easements that were granted for purposes of constructing underground infrastructure in the two permanent easements. I have, as councils are aware, or at least as Councilwoman James and Councilman Parker are aware, because I've been in touch with them, both in connection with Councilwoman James's leadership with Friends of Pontiac Parks, and Councilman Parker in connection with the fact that he represents the district where Galloway Lake Park is located, we've been seeking additional information over the past week from the Water Resources Commission. The latest schematic that they presented to us today, although I had asked for it a week ago, they didn't get it to us until today, outlines the location of the easements, but I'm only able to see three temporary easements on it and either one or two permanent easements. So I asked some follow-up questions about that. They're in touch with their program or project manager to get some additional information, so I await some of that information. The other information that I've asked for is what the current status of that project is. The construction schedule that the Water Resources Commission provided me suggests that actual construction or placing of underground infrastructure doesn't begin until next month in August, but there's been some reports from both council members as well as city staff people that they may have broken ground there already. So, again, they're reaching out to their project manager to provide me with an update in that regard. The easements were executed by the previous mayor without approval or a vote of the previous city council. The city's attorney at the time, or at least the law firm for the city's attorney at the time, apparently did review the easements themselves, but in my conversation with the city's attorney, they acknowledged that there's a good argument that the city council needed to approve these easements, that the previous mayor did not have the legal authority to execute these easements on her own. And the basis for that is Section 3.113 of one of the articles of the city charter, which requires that no city property can be sold, or leased, or otherwise disposed of without an approval and vote of the city council. Now, there's some ambiguity in that language because this is not an outright sale of the property in its entirety, and, but it's clearly a disposal of certain land or property rights by the city, and a temporary easement is really a lease by another name. It's really a lease of surface rights during the term of the construction project for staging for construction, for laying out materials or equipment to be used in construction. So it is, in essence, a lease by another name. And so it's my own view that easements cannot be executed by the mayor unilaterally, but need to be approved by city council. And the fact that that did not happen almost a year ago under the previous administration raises questions as to whether or not these easements are valid. I have reached out to the Water Resources Commissioner himself, Jim Nash, to try to schedule a meeting. We've also reached out to his staff in an attempt to schedule a meeting. The Water Resources Commissioner himself, Jim Nash, is on vacation this week, so we're going to try to sit down with him as soon as possible, which presumably will be early next week. In the meantime, the most important question, to get a sense of the urgency here, is what the construction schedule is. You know, the placement of the easements is important because the easements themselves prohibit the city from building certain structures where these easements lie, and in that regard, some locations for the easements are better or worse than others. We certainly don't want these easements to be placed or to be located anywhere where it will inhibit the city from locating important recreational structures in the future. And so the actual location of these easements is important, although the easements themselves are underground for underground piping. And we acknowledge, I think, that some underground location of piping in that general vicinity is important to deliver services to city residents in terms of water and sewer services in a cost-effective way. The specific location of this underground infrastructure is very important so that it does not unduly interfere with future uses of Galloway Lake Park. And it's not at all clear to me that there was appropriate consideration given by the city administration at that time as to where the specific location should be placed. And so we're gonna continue with our outreach to the Water Resources Commission to find out more about the timeline for construction, about whether we can alter some of the specific locations of these easements, and about whether or not the easements are valid at all, given the fact that city council did not approve them. So stay tuned, but we're working very diligently on this.
Councilman Parker, and then Councilwoman James.
Thank you, Councilman McGinnis. I certainly do appreciate the mayor's update on the Galloway Park. I have a couple of questions. One, the document that we had last week said that the property was sold for a dollar. Now, that's what the document said. And I'm not a lawyer, so I don't understand temporary easements versus permanent easements, but we talked about that last week and understood that part of the temporary became permanent. We understand that the piping, we understand it, and I can tell you, because I got pictures, that the project started sometime in June, because they've been digging since June. I have pictures that they've been digging since June, and they have continued to dig even now. So my question becomes if we know that the city council did not approve it, and we know there's work not being done, should we also not be aggressively pursuing a stop-work order until stuff gets decided? Because they're still working. While we're sitting here discussing and talking, they're still working. And certainly, somebody needs to say, if you can't stop, and if you can't keep going, but at least we can get some type of understanding as to what is going on in the park. but at least we can get some type of understanding as to what is going on in the park. From what I've seen, if the pipes go from where I've seen them putting pipes and all the other digging that they're doing, there's going to make a whole lot of property in the park virtually unusable, because you're going to put something on top of a pipe, and you can't do that. So I'm still questioning what's going on, why we haven't already issued a stop-work order, and why we're still allowing them to continue to work if that's the case.
Councilwoman James.
I share those concerns. I also have a specific question in regards to the email that we got from Mr. Sandahl. He mentions a University Bridge rehab project that, he said, "It's our understanding that this project will also utilize areas of the park for storage." Does anyone know what that is about? It's a part of the email that was sent by Mr. Sandahl.
Mayor Grimal.
I don't know definitively, but what I assume that's a reference to is, as council is aware, and as we've discussed, and in fact, council has voted on this matter this year, the University Drive Bridge over the old railway line, now known as the North Spur, is being repaired. And I assume that, again, any construction project needs a staging area, a place where during the term of that construction project, equipment and supplies are able to be stored. My assumption from his email is that that project for the University Bridge, during the term of that project, is locating supplies for use in that bridge repair, which is authorized by the city, of course, for temporary location of those building materials and supplies.
So this is temporary storage, and it's above-ground storage?
That's right.
Okay, all right.
A follow-up question I have related to that. With those questions, and I'm not saying it's the wrong decision, but do those questions come to the administration where, like, the State Department of Transportation would say, hey, this is the best, most viable slice of land to do this, it's under control of the city? How formalized does it need to get? Has that come before you yet?
Well, the short answer is no. Those kinds of decisions don't come to the mayor's office, but in this case, it wouldn't be the State Department of Transportation doing the work, I don't believe. I believe that this work is being done by the city. We're utilizing state grant dollars for the University Drive Bridge project I'm referring to. But that is a project that's being done under the auspices of the city.
Makes sense. Councilwoman Rutherford, you have the floor.
Mayor Grimal, if the previous council didn't give the authority, the mayor did it without the permission of it, can you do a cease and desist? And will, if we can, if it's legal, will you do it? That's my question.
Mayor Grimal.
Yeah, we can certainly request that they cease construction, and that was my anticipation to do today, assuming I got an answer today about where they're at in construction. Given that I have not yet gotten an answer, my intent is to send an email to the Water Resources Commission after tonight's council meeting, telling them, hey, you need to stop doing what you're doing. Now, I don't have the ability to order that, per se. Only a judge could order that. And it'll be interesting to see what the Water Resources Commission says in response. They may say, well, we believe these easements are valid, and we're continuing work. But at least they're put on notice that we are disputing whether they have the legal right to continue, and we're asking them to immediately cease construction until we can get this sorted out.
All right.
And follow-up, Councilwoman Rutherford.
Oh, no, I just wanted to say thank you for that. I just want to get some clarity, because last week I asked, are there any other surprises that are going to be thrown at us that we don't know about, so we can prepare ourselves for it?
Yeah. Mayor Grimal.
Yeah, just in response to that, you raised that question in response to this issue, so this is not a new issue since you made that comment. But you're right to ask that question, and there's no telling what else we might learn about what the previous administration did without council approval, or potentially without appropriate legal authority.
Thank you.
Councilman Parker, and then Councilwoman James.
Just one quick question. As we talked about the storage, my question is, cannot, if they are working on the University Bridge, can that equipment not be stored on the North Spur? Or whatever equipment they got?
Well, it could potentially, sorry. It could potentially be stored. I think there's a question about how to deliver any materials. The North Spur, of course, is below grade from the University Bridge itself. That's why the University Bridge was built, to go over what's now the North Spur, what was an active railway line. And there's also a question about truck access to the North Spur, so there are lots of logistical questions that raises. You know, again, we're talking about temporary storage solely on the surface, but if you believe that the materials that are being stored for the University Bridge construction at Galloway Lake Park are hindering the use of that park, let's definitely have that conversation. I'm not aware, as I sit here, as to what specific materials are being stored there. All we know so far is that the Water Resources Commission is saying that some are being stored there. But I'd be interested to know, are there materials being stored there? How many materials are being stored there? And where are they being stored? And we can certainly explore that. But the bigger issue, in my view here, is the permanent granting of easements in Galloway Lake Park, and the potential that those underground easements prevent the city in perpetuity, forever, from building structures over that underground infrastructure in those easements. The temporary easements and any temporary storage of materials on the surface is, I think, a far less substantial concern than the permanent granting of these rights.
Councilman James, you have the floor.
Yeah, in investigating and looking at this issue, we pulled up the document that Lou Schimmel put together, the whole package for the sale of the water resource, Pontiac's city water resource facilities. And as a part of that document, Lou Schimmel gave the water resource, or gave the county very liberal rights in terms of easements. So, you know, what we have to, and I agree with the mayor, but we have to look at, what are our legal grounds right now? Because I'm wondering, you know, what documentation do we have within our charter, within our ordinances, that outline, you know, our regulations and things regarding these charters? Because, you know, if we order a cease and desist, we will have to be able to do it on legal grounds. And if we don't have those legal grounds within our own framework, then we're going to be left with really just trying to negotiate with water resource and to start this process over again, because Schimmel definitely has put language in here that if we don't have anything written and documented as a city to counter it, it's going to stand, because his documents are legal documents. So we really are faced with a very difficult situation. It's not just going to be as simple as calling a cease and desist. We have to really look at, what are our legal grounds? And that was why I'm hoping that we can get some legal help here. You know, it wouldn't have hurt to have our own council in the meeting tonight to talk about, what legal recourse do we really have here? Because I don't think we have the documentation in place that would counter what Schimmel has in place. Yeah.
Other discussion? Hearing no further discussion, and we move to our final discussion item, Elizabeth Dennison IV mural by artist Zach Curtis. A very brief update, there was a community crowdfunding effort. I know members of the community, members of the city council, Councilman Nicholson very generously donated to this. You as well, all right? And this is located in, oh, Pro Tem Carrington as well. So this was definitely a group effort. Many community members came together, and the artist Zach Curtis, each year, does a signature mural in our community, sort of as a love letter or giving back to the community, where he has really got his artistic foundation and his roots. Councilwoman James worked with Zach Curtis and another mural artist for the District 4, mural that's now in place at Baldwin and Walton on the side of Oakland Hope. There are others that you've seen downtown, with dogs, with cats, on the side of Goldner Walsh, on the side of Thrifty Florists on Telegraph last year. And so this was the rendering. It's a 65-foot-tall mural on the side of the Riker Building downtown. This is sort of like the shorter part of the Riker Building, where the parking garage is included, the enclosed parking garage. And it depicts Elizabeth Dennison IV. She's the first African-American landowner in the city of Pontiac, dating back to 1825, but also believed to be the first known black woman in all of Michigan to have purchased property. And so it's a very important part of Pontiac's story, Oakland County's story, and Michigan's story, but it's obviously very stunning. This is just sort of a rough rendering to show what this massive, massive mural will be when you're essentially driving eastbound on M-59. You're going to be seeing it hardcore. People going southbound on the loop, as it is now. I mean, it's just extremely prominent and visible. Just wanted to update the community that in the last few days, he's begun that mural. So just for scale, you can see he's the, you know, five-foot-something or six-foot-something person on that crane, on that lift, and you could see where he's just kind of done the layout of Elizabeth Dennison IV, nicknamed Lizette. And it's sort of an iconic portrait that was of Lizette from the era. And so I just want to update the community that that's what you're seeing taking shape, and just want to give you a little bit of the context and backstory. This is a labor of love for the mural artists, but also a cumulative grassroots effort of the community. Councilwoman Rutherford.
You forgot to mention what district that's going to be.
Take it away. Take it away.
Oh, man. I am so excited that this mural will be featured in the best district there ever was and there will be, District 1. So you will see it when you're riding on Woodward. You'll be inspired. You can tell your kids, grandkids, and your other kids that this woman owned property, that this woman was a leader, that this woman was forthright, and it is located in, loud and proud, in District 1. So I'm so excited about that. That's it.
Councilwoman James.
Thank you for sharing. And, but you also forgot to mention that she donated the property that the cemetery is on.
You're right.
She donated that property to the city for, what's the name of the cemetery?
Oak Hill.
Oak Hill. For Oak Hill Cemetery, Elizabeth Dennison IV is the woman that donated that land to the city. She owned it.
And it's worth pointing out, and you could see some of the breaking of the chains, she was born enslaved. She was born in bondage in Mount Clemens in Macomb County, and her and her siblings escaped to Canada to claim their own freedom before ultimately moving back to America. So a really remarkable story of a remarkable life, and hopefully this mural can help not only immortalize that story further, but amplify it throughout the community. Others who wish to have the floor?
That's it.
Councilman Nicholson.
If you drive past, actually, he does have a portion of her face has been completed at this point, in addition to the, so the top section of her face has been completed. So it's really neat to see that in action. And you can also kind of make out some of the different words and different things that people that were passing by said to him while he was sketching, and things that were meaningful to him, just as an artist, while he was getting ready to make this portrait. It's nice to see him, he stops in every now and then during lunch, as he's working on the mural downtown, and is just every day more enthused than he was the last day. So it's nice to see his artistic journey happening with it as well.
A massive epic public art installation in our community. Any further discussion? Thank you, and thank you to all of the community members and council members who financially supported the crowdfunding effort that allowed this project to move forward. We now are at recognition of elected officials. The visuals you see there is one of the beautiful works of art that was at this past weekend's Arts Crawl. Any elected officials or their representatives who wish to address us this evening? I believe there's a representative from Congressman Andy Levin's staff. If you want to take the podium, you have the floor.
Good evening, Pontiac. Thank you all so much for having us here. Really appreciate being here. I want to thank the city council, the mayor as well, for allowing us to be here, too. I'm not going to be before you long. My name is Christopher Ford. I'm the Outreach Director for Congressman Levin. He's in DC right now, and he's voting on legislation to not only combat climate change, he's also fighting a very unpopular policing bill that would not benefit the people of this community. And tonight, he's also doing a tele-town hall with the members of the Michigan Regional Council of Carpenters, one of the many labor unions that is working every day to make sure that not only unions are strong, but that he has a really strong support within that labor community, too. He's already finding ways to help the city of Pontiac and Washington, thanks to a lot of the relationships here in City Hall. Since his current district neighbors in Pontiac have expressed the interest of what needs to happen here as far as progressing the needs of the city, he was successful in getting $3.2 million approved for this city for golf road construction at Begley Street. So that passed in the House of Representatives this week. Hopefully, we can get that done and pass in the Senate as well, but that in itself is huge, is what I would consider words over positioning, and that's something that he's actually really done here, so I'm really happy about that. Not only that, we're also excited to not only thank the mayor for working with him on that as well. We thank you for that, Mayor Grimal. So the primary is seven days away. We're knocking on every door, every single day. We're hosting the Get Out to Vote rally here on Saginaw Street.
Order.
Oh, excuse me. Forgive me.
The council rules prohibit campaigning
Fair enough.
At our public city council meetings.
No problem.
We appreciate the continued update on elected official updates.
No problem at all. So the final thing that I would like to say is, the congressman's working very hard right now to make sure that the issues of the city are being supported, and that there are needs that are being addressed in Congress for the city of Pontiac, as well as the 11th district as well. I thank you all for allowing us to come and speak, and we look forward to working closely with you all after next Tuesday.
Thank you. Other elected officials that wish to be recognized? With that, we move on to Agenda Address. President Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. First, we have Dr. Deidre Waterman.
I am here for Agenda Item 2, but I would first like to congratulate Keno. I know how dear that Ascend Foundation was to your dad, and it was kind of the inspiration for me to do the Spirit of Pontiac Community Foundation, that was an offspring of the partnership we have with Oakland University. But I see that you have addressed, had a discussion about the agenda item related to Galloway Park, and I did send a letter to council based upon something that somebody had sent me when they saw last Tuesday's council meeting. And the thought was, then, they were disturbed about the fact that you were saying you didn't know about, council didn't know about, these easements, and that you couldn't find them, and the discussion went on to the point that maybe I had walked away with them, the public records. I think one of the council people addressed that. So I didn't walk away with any public records. They are, and I'm sure you found them, you have them now, all right? And I also did some additional research. The original Galloway Park pumping station, what's the easements relate to, was done by the emergency manager, Order S-230, before I took office, before I was even mayor, in 2013. There were some other housekeeping items associated with that, including in January of last year, the DPW director, Dan Ringo, did sign some housekeeping items so that the city could have the use of the park even while temporary easements were being done. So I just wanted to give that to you and to know, in addition to the fact, easements, the part that I signed, as we were told by the mayor, were reviewed by the city attorney. I'm not an easement expert, so I always rely upon the city attorney who told me I could proceed as it was. So that's what I did. Now, in terms of some other things, you wanted some decisions made about the park. There are some other things that can come for that park, and one of the things is ARP money can be used for neighborhood stabilization. Councilperson James, as well as the fact that the city did do
That does conclude your time.
An feasibility study on E-Walt Center, and that is available in terms of how that can be lost.
Thank you, Dr. Waterman. Next, we have Andrea Manns. What item, this is Agenda Address, what item are you speaking about from our agenda? What item, this is Agenda Address, what item are you speaking about from our agenda? Or you want to go to public comment?
On the wrong child.
Okay. I'll move you to public comment.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Gloria Miller? What item on Agenda Address, please?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, it's good to see you. I'm glad you came down and specified that, you know, so you said a magic word. You said city attorney. So the city attorney should know, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Grimal. The current one. She left it with Mr. Chubbs. He's still here with us. So she's saying that he, he draw that up. And that is true. Schimmel did do a lot of stuff. He sold a lot of stuff around here. I was back there doing protests back then. But I want to mention about Galloway. Now, frankly speaking, I'm going to say, truthfully, Galloway been this way for quite some time. Now, one thing, the mayor, the former mayor and I will agree, we didn't get along. But, but because I'm about truth. When you're lying, I'm going to call you out. That's all. When you lie, you lie. And that goes for anybody up there. It's not personal. It's fact. I work for the people. I don't work for money. Nobody don't pay me anything. I don't need anything. All I want is my city to be right. I got senior here that love the city, wants it right. Now, these murals, that sounds great. And I don't want to sound like a broken record, but all I see is trash, growed-up trees. Trees need to be cut to have them cut in 20 years. What, excuse me, and those kids is watching this, what the H is doing, all murals, when you ride around the city and all you see is dirt and trees and you're embarrassed of it? That's just where I'm coming from. Many people don't see what I see when I get out and ride around. Also, Mayor, I see you approving this money for Wade Trim. Like, you know, I want to hit you with that before, but I got onto something else. And you know Brett, we usually don't agree on a lot, but I agree with you on this. When you let Wade Trim go, all you're doing is rehiring him and putting him under the auspices of the city of Pontiac. You're not giving an opportunity for anybody else because the mayor stipulally, specifically stated that all of them will stay. So my word to all the citizens of Pontiac, that everybody that was currently here is still here. It's not an opportunity for anybody to be open to get a position or job because they come first. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Larry Jasper, what item, sir?
Okay, so Galloway Park. First off, I just want to bring up the ex-mayor mentioned that she had Dan Ringo sign off on some of the stuff there. I want to remind the council and the mayor that Dan Ringo was never approved by the council, therefore, he shouldn't have been in office. And since he wasn't in office, he signed for something that the mayor is now using him as an excuse. As far as property rights are concerned, Councilwoman James, when you own a property and you give away easements, there's a value to that easement. That easement is paid for. That's why it states, Councilwoman Parker, a dollar. That's not what the value is. As far as the emergency manager is concerned, has nothing to do with those easements. Those easements have to be approved. And yes, you can file an immediate emergency petition to cease and desist. And you should go to council, should go to Mrs. Sharp and ask her to draft that for you because the council could take action themselves with an emergency resolution. Doesn't have to wait for the mayor to go and get council to find out whether or not, what's happening, because this all should have been done for the citizens a whole long time ago. But the ex-mayor had something else involved with it. She says she doesn't know easements, but she is an attorney, and she does know the issues. And she knows exactly what she's doing. But that being said,
I'm an attorney.
Stop it. Stop it now because they shouldn't be out there digging. They shouldn't be out there putting in pipes. And as far as Councilwoman Rutherford talked about, those parks are very important for the children. And without those parks, you don't have anything to really support the community. And you're talking about a temporary easement for all the construction on the bridge. How long is that going to take? Two, three years? Do we know? Stop it now, figure it out, then go ahead and proceed forward. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
That concludes our Agenda Address. President?
We are now at ordinances. Is there a motion to approve an ordinance amendment to the fee schedule as adopted in the city of Pontiac fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget?
I make the motion.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilman Parker. So that item is now before us. Want to give the floor to the administration to queue it up. What are we looking at?
Thank you very much, President McGinnis. I'd like to turn the floor over to Deputy Mayor Stevens to run through the proposed adjustments to the fee schedule.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So you have in front of you proposed changes to the fee schedule. These are being introduced as an ordinance because they were introduced as an ordinance when we passed the budget. They were part of the budget ordinance. And so as we were getting ready to institute some, some fees and some changes in our daily activity, we noticed that they were not in the fee schedule. The most important one of those, we've discussed tangentially at this meeting, and that is getting the Ruth Peterson Center and the Bowen Center back active for repasses and other types of activities. Because of the changes that have come about with COVID, what we wanted to do was actually institute a COVID cleaning charge for those facilities. We cannot do that without that being part of the fee schedule. And so when we, when we went to go do that, we also started, the mayor and I took a deep dive look at some of the charges that were in the fee schedule. An example of one of the charges that we saw was there is a land division fee, and there is also a lot split fee, which would appear to be a redundant fee for doing the same thing. So we invited all of the departments to take a serious look at the fee schedule and say, because we have to make this one change, we want to make sure that any other changes that had not been made to update the schedule were also made. And so that's what you see in front of you. Unfortunately, when we did that, the clerk does not report to the mayor's office. So there were changes from the clerk's office that not, that did not get included in our original document. But we did reach out to the clerk as we were going back through and doing our final edits. And so the clerk did send those, those changes to us. The unfortunate part was that when we sent them to the city attorney to have them incorporated in this document through the back and forth of email, we got emailed the same document twice, which did not have all of the final, final changes. So this is a first reading, and all of the additional changes from the clerk's office will be included in next week's reading.
All right. So again, this is the first reading. With any change to an ordinance, we do it multiple times. That way, there can be thorough research, review, and debate, but also community members can provide feedback on any changes they'd like to see. I'm going to quickly go through and itemize the different changes. Correct me if I'm misinterpreting or misreading something. And, but first, I'm going to give the floor to the clerk's office. Do you want to share the anticipated changes that will be reflected in your, in your department, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the bulk of the changes come under the copy of voter files. There is a citywide voter list email option, which is $270 per voting district, email option, $40 per precinct, email option, $15. And then per name, if people want just Xero copies, we charge $0.02 per name. And then Xero copies per page is a dollar. So those are the changes that need to be incorporated into the ordinance.
Okay. And so that's really modernizing what's a service that's already available, but, you know, per disc email option, that's just not as current technologically with how people often can use or would request information. So it makes it easier for your office, but also for residents that would be requesting it. All right. So for the planning department, it strikes the land division fee of $600, and that's because the administration's understanding is that there isn't much difference in practical application between land division and lot split. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. It strikes the map-only color fee of $5 underneath the comprehensive plan book with map. And then same, it strikes the map-only colored map and instead makes that zoning map 11x17. So it's showing the difference of the eight-and-a-half, 11 versus 11x17 variations with documents because that has different implications for cost of printing or copies. Under administrative review fees, it adds, it apparently adds conditional zoning map amendment of fee of $600. And Mr. Donovan Smith is in the wings confirming that, since this is his terrain. So continue to go through. I show that under, under building permits, it's updating fee for inspection outside of regular business hours shall be 1.5 times rate of inspector with three-hour minimum charge per hour. So it's just updating language because it, based on how it worded before. Going through, under demolition permit, it adds a new fee, $500, application to remove from dangerous building list. Under team inspection, it updates to show a full team inspection would be $350, then per inspector, $50. Under electrical permits, fee for inspection outside of regular hours, business, regular business hours shall be at 1.5 times rate of inspector with three-hour minimum charge per hour. So it's updating language. Same under mechanical permits for the heating equipment, newer replacement, each additional unit over 10 at same occupancy, just makes it more clear. Commercial hood system adds RTUs, rooftop units up to 100,000 BTU, $125. 200,000 to 400,000 BTU, $150 would be the fee. Over 400,000 BTUs to 2 million BTUs would be $175. And 2 million to 5 million BTU, so we're talking pretty giant facilities that would be $200 at that amount. Under piping, it adds the word plumbing and updates the fee to be $45 for plumbing, medical gas, process piping, hydraulic piping, refrigerating, refrigeration piping, each system. Adds another clause for fee inspection up for outside of business hours. Under plumbing permits, it updates that the water heater permit cost would be $32. And pressure test of each system would be $32. Under plumbing permits for NSF or insufficient funds, it adds the language about inspections outside of regular business hours. And again, for the fire permit electrical, adds that clearer information about outside of regular business hours. Business licenses. Currently, a new business license or renewal of a business license in our city is $160. This update would take the new license or new business license down to $50, and would also take down the renewal of one's business license to $25. So just a lot more attainable than the $160 just for a new or renewal because philosophically, the administration wants to be able to know more and encourage more businesses to register so they can get more resources, and we can not try and be an undue burden on entrepreneurs and small businesses in our city. Under business licenses, it strikes the special event license cost of $1,200 to instead be $500. It strikes the non-participating vendor fee, that was $1,000. It strikes the categories of niche business, that's arcade and vending machines, massage parlor, newspaper delivery receptacle, which was $1 fee, sidewalk cafe, taxi cab per bond plate, taxi cab business, and taxi cab driver. So it strikes all of those. It strikes public assessment, public assembly, a fee of $175 for amusement gallery, dance hall, or theater. Under transient housing, it changes the word from transient to transitional. Under business licenses continued, it strikes the fees for public address sound, sound vehicle, transient trader, going out of business sale, peaceful assembly, sound permit. There are other business licenses that remain, but those are, based on my understanding, it's striking those that are no longer actually being used because they fall under business permits more generally.
Correct.
Because there's, it's also striking business requiring bonds for auctioneer, auctioneer two times the value of auction items, Christmas tree sales, circus or carnival, dry cleaners, frozen confectioners, which would be ice cream truck, junk dealer, junk gatherer, second-hand dealer, newspaper delivery receptacle, sidewalk cafe. Under rental registration, it adds a reschedule fee limit of one of $10. It strikes the rental complaint win certified fee of $75 that we discussed during our budget hearings. It updates the spelling of the word pavilion under parks, to be correct. It changes special event permit to be community event permit, so a changing of phraseology. And then it adds a special event city property use for city hall lawn seating Friday and Saturday, Pontiac car show parking, max five cars, spectator parking, Lot A, which is Woodward Avenue and Weston Street, Lot B, which is Woodward Avenue and South Saginaw Street, Lot C, which is Woodward Avenue and Cottage Street, Lot D, Woodward Avenue and Whittmore Street, and then also adding food truck registration. And so I want to give the floor to the administration for any of those items identified for you or staff, if there's anything further you'd like to elaborate on. And the anticipation is that for the second reading, we probably won't have to go as in-depth because we're already kind of reviewing it. Deputy Mayor Stevens, anything you'd like to elaborate on?
Yes.
Councilman Nicholson?
Thank you, Council President. In addition to the changes that were left off for the clerk's office, there should have been a change under parks for porta-johns. They are no longer $90. They are $230. That is the new current pricing. That is what we actually pay for the porta-johns. It's just a pass-through. Additionally, under sanitation right-of-way abatements, there should be a first-time fee of $300 if we have to do an abatement, and a fee of $500 for every additional abatement that we have to do. And I think that covers all of the missing items.
So we'll see those in the updated document reflected next week. Councilman Nicholson and then Councilman James.
I have two questions on the abatement-oriented fees. Is there any possibility of doing something like a market rate? Like, this is what it costs and it gets passed through. Like, $300, I could imagine a large abatement would not cover our cost. Is there any way for us to say, okay, the abatement was caused by negligence outside of going through a civil process? Is there a way to incorporate a fee?
We will check with the attorney to see if we can do that, yes.
I think, yeah, when there's a negligence-based issue, especially when we're talking about rental, you know, abatements and things like that. And then my second question is on the spectator lot rentals. I imagine this is oriented towards the Dream Cruise. Are we giving that away? I mean, is $2,500 to me, when you were dealing with potential, I mean, Birmingham has, right, like Chevy comes into town and takes multiple lots or larger car companies for the, you know, car clubs for the weekends? Is, do we know what the other cities are charging for those, their spaces?
Mayor Grimal?
You're referring to a fee for
The spectator parking, the lot rentals, yeah.
During Woodward Dream Cruise?
Right.
Yeah, so we don't, and we can investigate that. Your point's well taken. I'll share that, how this has happened in past years is that the city went through an outside broker, John Witz, to reserve these spaces, and the city got a fraction of what was being charged. This year, we're doing it directly ourselves instead of going through a broker so that the city realizes the full amount of that revenue. And, but we will look into what the market, if you will, rate that other communities are charging for similar city-owned land in other cities for spectators. So we can definitely do that investigation this week.
Thank you.
Councilman James, you have the floor?
Yes, I've got two questions. One is on the right-of-way abatements. What exactly are those? Just kind of let me know, I'm not clear on what that is.
Yeah, so
What is an R-W abatement?
Yeah, so a right-of, thank you, Council President. A right-of-way abatement would be a situation where the property owner is responsible for some sort of hazard or trash in our right-of-way that we have to then remove or abate. And so this is us stating that when we have to take care of your mess, we are going to fine you for it.
Okay.
So 10 mattresses laying between the sidewalk and the curb of the street?
So that amount would be the fine that would, that the homeowner would incur?
The property owner.
That the property owner would incur. Okay, the second question is, under senior centers, I don't see where you mentioned that you had added the sanitation fee. Is that, is that here? Is that, is that here?
Sit.
Under, under senior centers, I thought you had said that you had added a $100, you know, deep cleaning fee?
Yes.
I don't see that here.
That did not get added, thank you. I will, I will, when we go through, I will make sure that that gets added, because that is actually what sparked this entire process.
Right, right. And, and the other question is, you know, I know we're still not out of COVID and we're still in a high contagious timeframe for these various viruses, but at some point, you know, when we're out of this, I would assume that we would drop that $100 fee.
Yes.
And it would get back to the more normal fee base.
That, that would, that would be our intent. And again, that, that is something that we have been doing and absorbing that cost, and we're now trying to pass that cost back on to the end user.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Rutherford, you have the floor.
Two questions. The comfort station, what is that?
Says Bodat Park.
It says Bodat Park only. What is that?
Deputy Mayor.
I will actually have to go back to DPW and ask what is exactly the comfort station.
That's the bathroom. Bathrooms.
Oh, it's unlocking the bathrooms.
Right, but that's, so the problem with that is, is the bathrooms are not viable to be used anyway, so shouldn't we take that off until we get the vibe, the bathrooms up to code? Because you can't use Bodat's bathrooms. You can't use Murphy Park bathrooms. You can't use Galloway Lake bathrooms. You can't use them. So that should be off. Don't, do you not agree? And then the other thing is, you know, because I'm on a roll, the deposit is $100 for the parks, correct? But there is a step, there's a thing in the DPW where no, I want to make sure we get this clarified. Is it or is it not true that no parks can be rented prior to, without the administration? Or has that been lifted? Because I've had several people who have tried to reserve the parks, they're being told that they can't rent the parks unless the executive branch gives them permission.
So, Mayor Grimal?
Yeah, so that's absolutely not the case, and if people are saying that, they're wrong. In fact, we got early wind of this happening early on in my administration, months ago, and we put the word out that that's absolutely not the case. That may have been how the city operated in the past, before this January, I don't know that. But apparently, staff here is accustomed to saying that to people.
Right.
That is not the case. We have conveyed that to staff on more than one occasion. And so if you learn of any staff member saying that, please share their names with me privately so we can remedy that.
Thank you. Councilman Goodman, you have the floor.
So I, I will say, this may be me speaking with a bias of a council member, but I haven't been stopped when it comes to events. But again, that may be me sitting on council. To your point about the, the comfort station, in my opinion, if we have a working set of bathrooms in any park in the city, we shouldn't necessarily be charging to have them open. We should, as I say, just be maintaining them for general public use, because I, I don't know, but I think people need to use bathrooms outside of just added events. And to Councilman Rutherford's point, I think that we should keep, if, if we're going to have the fee, for whatever reason, I think having it on here now, with, with the, obviously, assuming that the administration will get their stuff together and have these parks and these facilities in order, that there's no point in us having to come back and revisit it if it's already in the fee schedule. The best thing that we can do is not charge it in the meantime, as it's not in working order. And then, once the, it is in order, begin to collect the fee, if we're going to collect the fee at all, which I'm not exactly in favor of.
Mayor Grimal, Councilman Nicholson, Councilwoman James.
Well, I, I think I agree with, with Councilman Goodman's point, and certainly with Councilwoman Rutherford's point. This fee was, was on the existing fee schedule that we inherited, and we didn't add it, but we certainly are open to getting rid of it. Some of this depends on what our ongoing park policy is. If our ongoing park policy is that, as we have, certainly we're not, and we haven't been, charging this fee if bathrooms don't work. So we're not unlocking bathrooms if those bathrooms don't work. So this is a historic fee, based on bathrooms working at some point in the past, and based on those bathrooms not being generally open to the public, but based on unlocking them or making them accessible to the public for specific events. Certainly, we have not been and would never charge a fee to unlock bathrooms if those bathrooms don't work. So let me just be clear about that. If, in fact, the future policy is that bathrooms are in working order and they are open to the public, period, without, just in general, then it, I agree with you, it wouldn't make sense to charge a specific event or happening in a park for that bathroom any more than we would charge general members of the public for that bathroom. I think in the past, there's been some concern about allowing working bathrooms to be open throughout the day if we don't have, or as we haven't in recent years at least, had adequate staff to properly maintain that bathroom. And so the idea was previously that if a bathroom was in working order, it would be unlocked for specific events that are reserved by a group upon request of that group. Moving forward, if we have adequate staffing to do so and we're leaving that bathroom open in general, then obviously, it wouldn't make sense to charge a fee to a specific group if the general public can use the bathroom. So I think that's the history there. And we didn't add this fee or alter this fee, it's been on the books for a while. If you'd like us to eliminate this fee, we can certainly do so. Some of that is contingent on ongoing future park policy regarding bathrooms, which I think has yet to be developed.
Councilmembers Nicholson, James, and Goodman.
So I, I don't know that we know the exact working condition of each park's bathroom for sure. I can't imagine that they were properly winterized from year to year, so I, I can't imagine that any of them are in great shape. But I, I have seen recently working crews going in and out of the bathrooms. I, I did see them at Bodat, I've seen them at two other parks. I don't know if we maybe use those buildings as storage for some facilities or something now, or if there is some sort of work that's being done, or maybe it's surveying or looking. I know we, we talked about looking at the different facilities to see those conditions, but I thought I'd throw that out there. I would have a concern with an unstaffed park in having an unlocked bathroom, from a vandalism perspective, but then also, I, I've, I've been to many city parks or in, in other municipalities that they do lock the bathroom. That $50 fee, to me, would, would incorporate toilet paper, making sure that there's soap in the bathrooms, cleaning, you know, having someone actually physically be able to go out, unlock, go back, re-lock. So, so with an un, you know, I, I, I think maybe I'm on the other side of that argument, but is there something that's going on in those, those, those facilities currently?
To the best of my knowledge, no. But again, this says Bodat Park only, so at the time that this was put together, that, that we received, and I would imagine that Bodat was the only place where the bathrooms were actually still viable. But we will get that history for you.
Thank you.
Councilman James, you have the floor.
Yes, the bathrooms at Bodat are usable, they're not in, of course, they haven't been updated, and I would like to see us do that. I would like to see us use some of the Opera dollars to make those kinds of very practical updates, to update that bathroom. And that's the only bathroom in the city right now that is open, it's not open, but it's, it can be opened. If, if a party wants to have an event at Bodat Park, they can pay the $50 charge and the bathrooms will be open. Now, we do have one other bathroom that is usable, and that is at Murphy Park, because we had the summer youth program at the warming center at Murphy Park. Those bathrooms are usable, but we have not opened that building to the public. Basically, we, we have the summer program there and the, and the building's locked back up. So again, there's a, there's a second opportunity to be able to have bathroom access for a park, but I agree with the council person that said, we, we need to have staffing in parks, in those places, before we can really open those bathrooms up. But there are two bathrooms, two facilities in the city that are currently usable, Bodat Park and Murphy Park.
Councilman Goodman.
So, and Councilman Nicholson, I completely hear your point in terms of just having an unlocked bathroom, in terms of safety and cleanliness. I, I think this goes to the mayor's point of like further park plans and regulations. So I, I think it's extremely important that we obviously create a safe environment within the city, but also making sure that, again, this is a, is a public space meant for every, every citizen that uses the park. So again, down the line, not for the specific issue, but coming up with, with some plan where it's a, some, obviously, some mixture between having the park just regularly staffed during, let's say, the summer months, when people are most frequently out there, that where we're not having to go through this fee. And then in possibly like non-peak times, having it scheduled to that fee or something of the sort, because again, what I don't want to do is have people who are going to the park like everyday average citizens and not being able to use a bathroom that is literally right there, and then having to drive to wherever to find a usable bathroom. So I think that whatever we do, we have to find some mixture that actually makes it accessible to the people of our city without charging them money.
Any further discussion on this first reading of the ordinance amendment for this fee schedule? This will be for the council next week with further documentation and deliberation. With that, we are at our next item of business. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve a new position, that of chief assistant clerk?
So move.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford. We give the floor now to City Clerk Garland Doyle for context.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, as most of you know, the Assistant City Clerk Elections Administrator has resigned. She accepted another position in another community. So after her resignation, I did a analysis of the current staffing and personnel needs of the office of the city clerk. So I'm requesting that a new position be created, which is called Chief Assistant Clerk. It would assume the responsibilities of that Assistant Clerk position, as well as get some additional responsibilities, such as helping with the planning and coordinating activities in the clerk's office and some other management responsibilities. This is actually a position that is actually in the city charter. Section 3.202 of the city charter permits the position of the Chief Assistant Clerk. I've worked with the administration, they're our human resources director, and crafting the job description. Thank you.
All right, with that, discussion on the motion before us. President Protem Carrington?
Thank you, President McGinnis. Clerk Doyle, so what is the difference between that particular job that you, you lost the staff and you asked us to implement to add this position to, to your department? Is it a, what's the financial difference?
Clerk Doyle, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. It really would depend on what salary that the new person is hired at. The Assistant City Clerk Elections Administrator, I believe her salary was $68,959. So it just, the salary range for this position is 71 to 85,000.
And to clarify, that range is commensurate with the experience of the candidate that's ultimately chosen.
That is correct, Mr. President. This job, the experience level and background are much more in-depth than I'm looking for this position than from the previous position.
Mayor Grimal?
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, for bringing this before us. I certainly think, all things considered, it makes sense and is a very reasonable request, and I know that you've been a, really, in my estimation, a sound steward of the clerk's office's funds. Am I interpreting this correctly, when you say that the chief assistant clerk position will assume the responsibilities for the assistant clerk position that was recently vacated? That this would both add the new position of Chief Assistant Clerk, but also eliminate that assistant clerk position?
Clerk Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. President. That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rutherford, you have the floor.
Did you do a salary analysis of how much we're paying, whereas they're being paid for this particular position that you're creating in other cities, such as Troy, Birmingham, Bloomfield, to name a few?
Clerk Doyle?
Yes, actually, during the budget period, I did a salary analysis, and salaries in the clerk's office was adjusted accordingly.
Oh, just to follow up. And so would this, if this person is hired, would they also be receiving a 3% raise increase? Or is that going to have to go for next year? Or is that already encompassed in what you're offering for the salary?
Clerk Doyle?
So they would receive a salary within the salary range.
Okay. Thank you.
Other discussion on the motion before us. Would the council like to take more time to deliberate, or do you feel comfortable in, in executing a verdict this evening?
Call with a vote.
Hearing no motion to postpone, and the speaker's list exhausted, the, the call is for us to vote, and since there's no further speakers, that's what we'll do. Roll call on the adoption of the resolution to add the new position of Chief Assistant Clerk to the city of Pontiac. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Oh, yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution commemorating Frank Russell with the honorary renaming of Earlmore Boulevard as Frank Russell Boulevard?
I make the motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. That motion is now before us. So, Councilwoman Rutherford, this is located in District 1, and you've been a strong advocate in recent months for this matter to come before us, so I'm going to give you the floor first. For the community's reference, this is a follow-up, more specific action to a broader approach that we adopt, we debated and then adopted a resolution in, in recent city council meetings where we talked about what would be the strategy the city council would consider when doing naming and commemorating decisions. So this is first example of that since we, we've done that approach. Councilwoman Rutherford, want to give you the floor.
Good evening. Never have I ever met someone who inspired greatness within me and as well as within this community. And so, prior to me winning the seat, Mr. Russell passed, and one of the promises I said is giving people their flowers due, and I couldn't do it while he was alive, and so I wanted to do it when he passed. So I went to Raheem, his son, and his wife, Mary, and we came up with a plan to honor a man who spoke volumes, who was a giant, whether you believed in him or agreed with his political position. This man changed so many children's lives, especially on the, on the South Side. So I would like to ask for his granddaughter, she had wrote something to give you a better understanding of it, because I don't have the words, but I believe his grandma, granddaughter and, and his wife does as well. So if you can come to the podium and do your presentation.
Councilwoman Rutherford, gives the floor to Ms. Russell. You have the floor.
President McGinnis, and you good-looking trustees up there. Mayor Grimal.
Let me correct that. You said good-looking trustees. Let the record reflect that, bless you.
Deputy Mayor Stevens, greetings, good mor, good evening. I'm not going to speak. I'm going to allow my granddaughter to speak, who has flown from Las Vegas, Nevada, this morning, to speak and give a few words regarding her Papa. We raised this young lady, she is the oldest granddaughter, and so she asked me if she could be allowed to say a few words, if it's the committee of the trustees' pleasure. Can, okay. Her name's Takiya Boyle.
You have the floor.
Thank you.
And feel free to move the microphone or even hold it handheld, whatever works best
Good evening, city council. Mayor, I appreciate your time and consideration of the street name change of the current Earlmore Boulevard to Frank Russell Boulevard. This letter was wrote in a commemoration of a true leader. This letter was wrote in a commemoration of a true leader, Roosevelt Frank Russell. The letter is a dedication to roots, remembering the legacy that humbly come from and leaves behind. I wrote this letter months ago, before I even knew of you guys' initiative with the history marks that you have outside of the city buildings. You guys have one outside of this building. We have one on William Street, outside of the creatives, Creative Arts Center. It's actually a shared placard between the Jones family and the Russell family. And the placard pretty much shows the initiative set for the migration that was put in place by Jake and Mary Sue Russell, who are the parents to Frank Russell. So I thought that the letter was fitting, being that the photo that you see, one of the images, is of the entire family, and it's actually staged at 66 Earlmore. So that is the residence where our family settled and currently resides as well. Once before, a picture was painted for me of 66 Earlmore, of generations coming and going, transitioning into the world. We were told stories of a backyard lined with colorful vegetables and fruit trees. Though once we came along, there was just a, a backyard with trees for us to witness. But now, every time I do step foot on 66 Earlmore, the visions of generations still roaming is prevalent. Excuse me. But I peer out the back, and I still see a beautiful garden where there's not only grass, I still think about what that garden means, what it means to plant seeds, what it says definitively about the family who plants those seeds, which is, this is our home, as in Pontiac. We are here to stay. We will nourish our minds and our bodies off of the land, which I believe is a powerful stance from the people who preceded us, and a clear vision for my grandfather of what to do when his time came. So now the roots that he does go on to plant, I'm sure is beyond what many of us expected, and it swells us with pride, because an enriched mind and body was exactly the path that Frank Russell followed. And with that, made a conscious decision to give his worldly knowledge, love, and hope to the community in which he had deep roots. We're talking about a selfless dedication to the people of Pontiac, especially the youth, for over fifty years, and forms of careers, sports, education, tutoring, coaching, philanthropy, and mentorship. When I look out the backyard on 66 Earlmore, between the visions of a garden, I see a young man running for the mayor of the city of Pontiac, addressing his constituents with the same passion as a man with a platform running for president. In a city he knew he possessed the wherewithal to create substantial change, though he tried many of times to be elected to an official city position without yielding the results he wanted, he didn't let that stop him. He found a way to impact change as the Human Resource Hiring and Recruitment Official for Oakland County, the Chairperson of Diversity and Inclusion, creating opportunities for minorities and members of the LGBTQ community, which was a progressive stance at the time and to this day. He gave a voice to those who had none in the form of representation. He started the Pontiac News fifteen years ago as a way to give the city its own voice to highlight the brilliancy of the people who come from Pontiac, Michigan. It was a positive news source with the local flavor at a time when Pontiac would only be published in surrounding news for the cancerous reasons that didn't shine a light on the state of the city. He used sports as a way to reach the children. Though he had a professional background in basketball, he taught us to use our athletic abilities as a means of free education. With little to no aid or assistance, he held clinics and programs for the youth, coached youth sports, and kept contacts on anyone who too wanted a brighter future for the youth. Frank Russell was well-connected and well-respected. Wasn't a morsel of information that he knew he didn't share. It wasn't a person he didn't embrace. He has mentees all over the world who held him and his wife in high regards, and didn't flinch at the opportunity to show them gratitude. When the children whom heart you touch, some of which you don't even know your impact, honor you in their adult life, that truly is a full-circle moment. This too, the name change of Earlmore, is a full-circle moment. Changing the name of Earlmore is a reminder of the seeds that we sow in the community, and how deep and firm those roots hold. A reminder of the rich culture of Pontiac and the people who cultivated it. As a reminder to the youth, our appreciation for them growing, becoming productive citizens, pillars of our community, a reminder of how those pillars of our communities are celebrated. If the children are our future, then Frank Russell's contribution to Pontiac will live on in the world forever. The changing of the street name will serve as a conversation starter, reminding everyone of the heroes who planted seeds, literally and figuratively, on the Pontiac streets. I want to thank you all, to the people supporting this effort, the people of Pontiac, Michigan, especially the residents of the South Side of Pontiac, the leaders and congress members. Thank you councilmen, councilmember leaders for the dedication to the preservation of history and celebration of our local heroes. Thank you. That's, that's all from the Russell family.
Frank's birthday is next month, the seventeenth of August. We will have a fish fry there for him. You all are invited. And those who don't know me, I am his wife, of forty-eight years. And he, he was the love of my life, and I have a big void in my life because he hasn't, he's no longer here. When he made his transition, I also wanted to follow. And my children said, "You got to be kidding us." But I'm glad I didn't. And we'd like, again, to thank the councilmen, particularly Ms. Rutherford, for commemorating my husband and renaming Earlmore Street Frank Russell Boulevard. Thank you so much. It's gonna be at the Arts Center.
Continued discussion on the motion before us, on the resolution commemorating Frank Russell with the honorary renaming of Earlmore Boulevard with Frank Russell Boulevard. President Protem Carrington, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. First and foremost, I'd like to say that Mr. Russell's a, a great debater, very fierce. He added me to about three or four Facebook groups. So anytime I made a statement, he'd say, "I want, I want you to see this point." Sometimes we was on different sides of different, different issues, but definitely respect Mr. Russell. Again, I, it's an honor to be a part of this resolution. Thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor? Councilman Parker?
Thank you, sir. I did not get to spend a lot of time with Brother Russell, but I did occasionally get to see him at various meetings throughout the city while he was here. I found him to be a man of integrity, a man of vision, a man of purpose, and a man that you didn't want to mess with.
That's right.
And so I thank him for the, the effort that he, the short time I got to spend with him, and I'm just looking forward to honoring him in this way.
Mayor Grimal?
I had the, the privilege to work with Mr. Russell in, in a couple of capacities. First and foremost, I, I got to know him during my time as a county commissioner, and of course, he was working, as, as was noted, at the county, and did a lot of very important work at the county. But I also interacted with him over the years through his publishing of Pontiac News. And of course, that was a real labor of love for Mr. Russell, because he recognized the complete void and vacuum of local news coverage here in Pontiac. And Pontiac News played a really important role in connecting people here in the city. And we were very fortunate to have the Pontiac News. It did a lot of important work. It was an important vehicle for important leaders and voices here in the city to be heard. And I'm just very grateful to all of you, his family members, for sharing him for so many decades with the community here in Pontiac, because he made an enormous impact, an enormous positive impact on so many lives here in the city. And so thank you for sharing him with all of us.
Councilman Goodman?
I will say, I did not get the pleasure of spending time around Mr. Russell. Being as young as I am, it just wasn't an opportunity for me. However, I have heard for a while now the, the immense impact that he has had, not only on the families of the South Side, as you know, Councilwoman Rutherford speaks of, but the entire city. And it, it, it is really an honor for myself to be able to, to help support this, because it, it, it is a long time that not only do we recognize the people who have helped build the city, but who have not only, you know, built the city, but helped put the cornerstones to what, you know, a lot of us do on this, in the city to this day, especially those of us who sit on this side of the dais, and what should be, you know, exemplary community service, and what it is to, to love your community in a way that is far beyond selfless. So I, 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 again, feel, honor myself being able to, to support this, and being able to, again, be able to help recognize the, the amazing work that has been done by Mr. Russell, and obviously, the entire family in the city of Pontiac. And this is me speaking, having a grandmother who lives on Bondale. So, so when I, when I say this, I mean it with all the sincerity in the world.
Councilman James?
Yes, I also want to add my voice to those who are speaking of Mr. Russell. I, I served on a couple of committees with him, so I had a chance to kind of know him personally. And he was really a, you know, he's history in Pontiac. His accomplishments, you know, his personal accomplishments in the athletic field, he brings and brought so much to this city. His professionalism, his personality. And I, I think it's to our shame that we did not acknowledge all that he accomplished in his life as much as, you know, during his lifetime. But I think this effort is certainly more than worthwhile. I'm very happy to see Earlmore, the street changed to Frank Russell Boulevard. You know, it alw- already was, actually, Frank Russell Boulevard, but we're just doing it formally. But he, he is just a Pontiac native, a Pontiac son, and we want to acknowledge that, you know, we loved him, we respected him as a man, and as an athlete, and as just a wonderful part of the Pontiac community. So I completely, wholeheartedly support the name change, and I want to just say to the family that we're so proud of this day, proud of your family, and proud of the contributions that Frank Russell has made to this city.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Rutherford?
Now that I got my voice back, I just want to say, the greatest memory I ever had of him was, was during the primary, and he had his straw hat on, and it was him, and he was in his big old truck. And I said, "Mr. Russell," I was feeling down, because I kept trying to call him. I said, "Mr. Russell, I've been trying to call you." He said, "I voted for you, so don't worry about it." And so, to say he was, he was a father figure to me when I didn't have a father, and I'm not just saying that for conversation, and he spoke life into me when others ta- condemned me for me being different and outspoken. And he always was like, "You crazy, but you be doing what you be doing." And so I just appreciate that, because he made me feel like my voice mattered. And for a little black girl who hasn't always felt like, I'm not talking about singing, but her voice mattered. My opinion mattered. What I said mattered. That is who Frank Russell was to me. That's why this is an honor and a privilege, because he made me believe that I mattered. And that's all I wanted to say.
Any additional discussion? I want to finally share in some of the clauses of the resolution. Mr. Roosevelt Frank Bones Russell was born on August seventeenth, nineteen forty-nine, and passed away at age seventy-two on September sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Mr. Russell had an enduring positive impact on the city of Pontiac and our residents, and significantly contributed to our community. Mr. Russell was a star basketball player at Pontiac Central High School and at the University of Detroit Mercy, and played in the National Basketball Association for the Chicago Bulls during the nineteen seventy-two, nineteen seventy-three season. His younger brothers Larry Russell, Campy Russell, and Walker Russell similarly reached high levels of college and professional basketball success, with a strong family legacy of achievement and dedication. Mr. Russell earned a law degree, opened the Youth Development Institute in Pontiac, chaired the city of Pontiac's Employment Diversity Program, worked for three decades for Oakland County Human Resources, established and published the Pontiac Times newspaper in our community. His proactive leadership in Pontiac extended to youth recreation for many years, serving as a coach and a mentor, and he also led the Oakland Community College Men's Basketball Team, and was inducted into the University of Detroit Mercy Hall of Fame. So just wanted to elevate some of those formal accomplishments as we move before consideration. Any further discussion? So the motion before us is adoption of the resolution commemorating Frank Russell with honorary renaming of Earlmore Boulevard with Frank Russell Boulevard. Roll call, Clerk Doyle. Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. Congratulations to the Russell family and the memory of Mr. Frank Russell. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the acceptance of an eighty thousand dollar grant award from the Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan in support of the Digital Workspace Upgrade Project?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. That resolution is before us. Want to give the floor to the administration for initial background.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I'd like to invite Ms. Bornghesser to the podium to speak about her work in securing this grant, and perhaps she can speak as well in terms of how much of this grant is specifically for Microsoft three sixty-five, and how much might be available for other purposes.
Shirley, thank you. The city of Pontiac has received eighty thousand dollars from the Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan in support of the Digital Workspace Upgrade Project. As you know, the Pontiac City Council formally approved the action of moving forward with the project in January of this year, contingent upon the administration obtaining external funding to assist with defraying the cost. We have done so. This grant award covers not only the data migration and implementation of the actual transition from our current system to our new system, which is, is slated to cost about thirty-seven thousand dollars, but I thought it wise to include the full scope of the project in the grant application. So this award also includes one year of subscription costs for all of the city employees and council, in addition to covering a portion of the staff time relating to the implementation of the project. That's why you'll see that the award amount exceeds the actual cost of the project as outlined in the budget.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion before us? Councilman Goodman?
And so I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that this is just an, an extension of what we've been working on since the beginning of our term, which is trying to get the city and staff and ourselves to be able to move over to Windows three sixty-five as an updated transitioning for our city hall. And again, the, the delay was mainly in making sure that we had the funds to actually fully cover the cost, opposed to doing it earlier and possibly having the city incur more of those costs than we had to. I will say, I wish it would have taken a lot less time, but I, I am happy that we were able to get this done, that we were able to get most of the costs not out of the city coffers. But this is just, again, a continued saga of what we've been working on since the beginning.
Any further discussion? Councilman Nicholson?
I just wanted to say gra-
I just wanted to say, great job. Again, I mean, you know, we looked through our budget and find where are those opportunities and we set our sights on it and you came through and this is an easy work and you, your success rate is unbelievable. Thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Mayor Grimaldi, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. I want to sort of amplify and build on Councilman Goodman's point because it is, of course, a continuation of the effort to fund through grants, Microsoft 365, and we're excited that that's finally coming to fruition and that we're able to implement Microsoft 365. But more broadly, it's designed to really underscore and encourage our department leaders, our department heads, our managers of various divisions to look for grant funding opportunities. Whenever we identify a need here in the city, whether it's software, whether it's a park and needed upgrades and improvements in parks, we want to encourage our staff and really all of us here at City Hall to think in terms of, is this a good candidate for grant funding? Because the more we can fund these things through grants, the more our general fund dollars here at the city can be invested into improving and enhancing everyday city services for residents. And so, I want to thank Ms. Born guesser for her work in securing the grant, but also everyone's patience and our IT staff's patience in pursuing this grant opportunity. Grant opportunities do take time. We want to try to accelerate those efforts and shorten the amount of time, but we also want to make sure that we're bringing more dollars to bear because we know that unless we bring more resources to bear, we won't see the transformations that our residents deserve here in the community in terms of improved city services.
Councilman Rutherford.
Communication is the foundation of all organizations and communities, so I commend you Alexandra Born guesser for once again going out and finding funding that did not actually exist in the previous administration. But most importantly, it is not costing the taxpayers a dime. I think we need to point that out, that we ain't paying no money, that it's free money that we get to spend it how we want to. That way, when people are complaining, we can reach the council, we have the up-to-date staff and the up-to-date equipment so that you can reach everybody when you want to, where you want to, and how you want to. So, once again, Alex, I appreciate what you're doing, you deserve everything that you've got coming to you. I appreciate you.
Councilman Goodman.
I'm just here to add on praise. You know, obviously, thank you so much for what you do, Alex. You have been obviously monumental in a lot of things that the city has been trying to do, both this administration and previous. And with this one being directly under my subcommittee's purview, I especially really appreciate it, but again, this is just an example of a lot of your hard work, so thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion before us? So, it's the motion to adopt the resolution approving the acceptance of an $80,000 grant award from the Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan, and it's in support of the Digital Workspace Upgrade Project. Hearing no further discussion, roll call and adoption, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the agreement with Grindline for the design and construction of the Pontiac Skate Park Project at Oakland Park? This is a grant-funded project.
Move Carrington.
Pro temp Carrington moved.
Support.
And, oh, he said it a little bit quicker. Councilman Goodman seconded that motion. So, we're, that's now before us. Want to give the floor to the administration for initial background information.
Thank you again. I believe counsel is very familiar with the skate park project, and I'd like to invite Ms. Born guesser again to the podium to speak about the selection of this firm. We received proposals from two different design-build firms and it was recommended and we are recommending that we utilize this firm, Grindline, and Ms. Born guesser can speak in greater detail as to why this firm was recommended.
Thank you. As you know, the City of Pontiac and community partners have received a matching grant and various partnerships to help fund this project. We are very eager to move forward with this project given its tight deadline. And the city has selected Oakland Park as the site of the skate park for a myriad of reasons, including feedback from the community, proximity to public transit, a central location, available space, and alignment with the DNR Parks and Rec Master Plan. The City of Pontiac executed a request for proposal per city policy and proposals were submitted on Thursday, June 23rd. The proposals were reviewed by a representative from the Pontiac Skate Park Project, an engineer from Nowack and Fraus, and the city planner, along with myself. After a careful review of the proposals, adherence to the RFP, overall services and costs, the city's administration requests their approval of the design-build contract with Grindline for the construction of this grant-funded skate park. Grindline's proposal included a half a million dollar budget, which is well within our budget, and a construction schedule that fits the needs of the deliverables as outlined by the funder. They come highly recommended by this funder or by the funder. They have constructed several skate parks in the Midwest and actually hometown favorite of Riverside, which is downtown, downtown Detroit, very popular, is home to many skate activities as well as competitions, events, festivals, what have you. Their skate parks are unique and different from the other proposal that was submitted in that they provide a street-style skate facility that is both beautiful but also provides the type of skating activities that the Pontiac Skate Park Group kind of practice and facilitate. I'm not a skater, so I'm sure Mary Jane could explain it much better than I, but it provides space for multiple skill levels. And so, it's not intimidating with large bowls and pump tracks in the way that the other proposals were. It provides a lot of flat space, grind rails, ramps, and things for beginners, but both beginners and advanced skaters, so it's unique in those aspects. And we are hoping to have this approved today so that we can stay within the timeline of the deliverables of the grant agreement.
Thank you. Pro temp Carrington, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. First, I'd definitely like to thank the Ralph C. Wilson Jr. Foundation, Oakland County Commissioners, the past administration and the past council for providing the matching dollars, and also this council for continuing to implement this skate park. I know the district is looking forward to it. I've been getting a lot of calls of when it starts, so I really appreciate the administration following through with this in ample time to get this done before this year is over.
Do you want to emphasize the target timeline? And so, as you shared already, that this allows those deliverables to be met because there's a pretty tight time window you're working with, correct?
Correct. The skate park is to be constructed by November of this year.
Other discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we move now on roll call on the adoption of the resolution to approve the agreement with Grindline for the design and construction of the Pontiac Skate Park Project at Oakland Park. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We now have before us an item that was tabled two meetings ago. It's the resolution to approve the budget amendments for fiscal year 2022, 2023, transferring $25,750 in funding out of the general fund balance and a total of $25,750. That same amount transferred to the general fund account for professional services and transferring $293,340 out of the building inspection fund and that transferring in a same, that same amount of $293,340 to the building inspection fund, professional services, Wade trim. So, that's the motion before us. Want to give the floor, Clerk Doyle. You can confirm that that was appropriately as required, posted in the newspaper of record as required.
And that's correct.
All right. With that, we deliberate on this matter. First, I want to give the floor to the administration. Is there anything new that you'd like us to know about this budget amendment request that originated with the administration?
No, other than the fact that we're really excited to be bringing back in-house these services that were outsourced and privatized by the emergency manager. And it's not easy to come by some of the talent that has been working in the highly specialized IT positions as well as the highly specialized building inspector positions, which require quite a bit of technical knowledge about building trades. And so, we're excited that we've extended an opportunity for some of the people working in these positions to come work in-house and that so many have expressed an interest in doing so, but not everyone is going to be coming on board, so there will be some open positions even if we end up hiring everybody who's interested in working in-house. As I've indicated before, the building official position will be posted, and that's the top position over the building inspectors, and we look forward to making sure that we're hiring the best and brightest person available for that role. So, we're really excited about the opportunity this provides to the city, both to take back control over these important city functions after so many years of outsourcing of these roles by the emergency manager, but we're also excited because bringing these positions back in-house will save the city an enormous amount of money.
Councilman Goodman identified something that I want to amplify. The summary, which is reflected in the agenda, has a slight deviation from the literal language of the resolution that's before us. It states, whereas the City of Pontiac timely approved the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget on June 22nd, 2022, and whereas in order to fund one month of the professional services contract for IT at a cost of $27,500, so, but now therefore it says $25,750, so...
And then, just to point out also in the earlier summary, that it also says $25,700. So, each iteration of a 257 number is slightly different.
But what it, the action is, is that it's moving $25,750 out and then in for that amount, so we just want to confirm with the administration, $25,750 is adequate for filling that one month professional services contract for IT?
Well, I'd like to invite Mr. Carrington to the podium so that he can speak to the details and to the specific numerical figures. In addition, I know that at last week's, maybe it was two weeks ago now, council meeting, I believe it was Pastor Councilman Parker who asked a question about what the net budgetary impact is of extending the IT services contract by one month compared to the budget that was passed and extending the Wade trim contract by two months compared to the budget as passed, acknowledging that there are increased costs to extending those contracts, but that we're saving some money by not employing people in-house for that one month and two-month periods respectively. And we do have an answer to that question as well, so without further ado, Mr. Carrington.
You have the floor.
Yeah, good evening, council. So, as the mayor indicated, we did prepare a response on the total cost for this that was raised, I believe it was two weeks ago, we had discussed that, you know, we're going to need to continue these contracts. We requested a certain amount. Part of that amount would be offset by the savings that we will be having from not having those salaries for the one month with the IT and for the two months with the building. And we did, again, provide that information to council. I was just trying to do some quick math on the issue that Councilman Goodman raised, and I believe that the, that the correct amount is $27,500. I will, just to verify that, I will need to pull up the contract with the IT company.
Any discussion in the interim? We can move to table this, two items down, so that way it'll fall after the resolution on the zoning map amendment. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Goodman, seconded by Rutherford that we table this to two doors down. Any discussion on the tabling? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on that slight, very slight, very temporary tabling, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We'll revisit it shortly. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the appointment of Alexandra Born guesser to serve as Director of Grants?
So moved. Support.
Support.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Nicholson. I think that's how I heard it.
Yes.
So, that motion is now before us. Mayor Grimaldi, you have the floor.
He ain't back.
Oh, Deputy Mayor Stevens, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Council President. So, you know, I'm not going to make you wait very long. You have already seen Ms. Born guesser's work in action, so I think you all know why this is the mayor's suggestion for a Director of Grants. And with that, I will entertain whatever the council would like to ask.
Well, as he makes his
Debut.
Walk of shame to the microphone. No, the mayor, we just want to give you the opportunity, Ms. Born guesser is your choice for Director of Grants, so I want to give you the floor to be able to celebrate your thought process.
Well, we have been very appreciative of the work that Ms. Born guesser has done during certainly the first six and a half months, almost seven months now, of our administration. Obviously, she has a track record going back further than that, but since her time here at the city, she has been the sole individual pursuing grant opportunities, and we think she's done a truly great job in that role. And it hasn't been easy because she's been able, single-handedly, without a staff to date, to bring substantial grant dollars to the city. And we know that she has developed during that time a lot of really important and valuable relationships with leaders of private foundations, with some governmental leaders at other levels of government, but also with a number of specific individual donors, including some who have very specific ties to the Pontiac community. So, we certainly believe that she is the right person to lead the Grants Department that has been newly established by City Council in this year's budget that took effect on July 1st. We also want to recognize that City Council has approved funding to hire additional people in that department, but we understand that it's important that we appoint the Grants Department Director before we start filling those other positions so that the director can have a specific hands-on role in the hiring process for the other staff positions in the Grants Department. And with that in mind, we believe that there's no question that Ms. Born guesser is the best qualified person to fill this role in the city, and we want to fill this position very quickly so that she can be directly involved in filling these other positions so that we can have a full and robust Grants Department so that we can make sure that finally, we're bringing the resources here to Pontiac that our residents deserve and that Pontiac truly does get its fair share after so many years of not getting its fair share.
Thank you. With that discussion, Councilman Parker, Councilwoman Rutherford, Councilman Goodman.
Thank you, Brother President. I just want to say to Ms. Born guesser, you know, there's an old phrase that we say around the religious community, that we look at those who are doing the work and appoint them over the work. And so, thank you for doing the work, that you can now be appointed over the work, and you've done a great, outstanding job. When we look you've done a great, outstanding job, and we look forward to great things from you. Congratulations. Oh, I'm sorry, I haven't voted yet.
Congratulations. Councilwoman Rutherford, you have the floor.
Yes. Alexandra, go get the money, Born-Gesser. I call her that behind her, back into her face, because every time I come to her, like, I need some money, she'd be like, hold on, mayor, I'm gonna go get the money for you. And she goes and gets the money. Never have I met a woman who is a mom, who is a, who hustles the way she does, in a way for such a compassionate place, but most importantly, because she puts her money where her mouth is, and she's here late in the midnight hour. I remember before I got on council, I would see her here, 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning. Then when I first got on council, I would see her, she's the first person I see, she's the last person I see sometimes. And I think that speaks a lot for her character. So for me personally, you are phenomenal woman, and I am so excited to have you leading us into the right direction, because you gets the money. And so that's all I got to say.
Councilman Goodman.
To just throw on some more praise there. I mean, so Alex, you come from a very similar background to me on this council, although you've been doing it for obviously a decent amount of time longer. But I look at your experience on this resume, besides what I already know, and it just further shows me that you are responsible enough, first and foremost, but very much beyond capable of doing this job, especially having to work with, in your previous time, working with, like, campaign finance, the amount of rules and regulations that you got used to with that, and that you obviously work with now for the city, obviously with some impediments beforehand, whereas now we are obviously looking for someone who can really be ambitious and fight for money for the city that helps us do the ambitious things that we want to do here. And I, again, I honestly cannot think of a person more qualified for that to help us at this time, so I, yeah.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion on the motion before us, the adoption of the resolution to approve the appointment of Alexandra Born-Gesser to serve as the Director of Grants, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Congratulations to you. And with that affirmative vote, you are not required to, but you have the option if you'd like to have any parting thoughts.
I was prepared to say, goodnight, Josh. Thank you so much for honoring me with this role. I'm very excited to provide this public service to the residents of Pontiac, and I've been enjoying my time here very much.
Thank you. Congratulations again, very well deserved. We now have the resolution to approve zoning map amendment, ZMA 22-06, at lots four and five of parcel 6414-19426013, and parcel 6414-19426003. And that is on Caesar Chavez Avenue at Kinney Road. There is currently no structure there, so that's why you see the lots and the parcel numbers. That's from C3 corridor commercial to M1 light manufacturing zoning district to only allow medical marijuana grow and processing use. This is the second reading. It has come before us previously, so it was previously moved and seconded. All zoning map amendment changes required two readings. It was before the Planning Commission before that, which provided a recommendation that also included a public hearing for that as well. So with that, give the floor to Administration. Mr. Donovan Smith is here, if he wants to elaborate any further. Mayor Grimaldi.
Thank you, Mr. President. We discussed this, as you know, and as you just mentioned, a couple of weeks ago. Mr. Gustafson had conducted the presentation at that time. He is on vacation this week, and so we have his trusted right-hand man with us, Mr. Smith. And, Mr. Smith, feel free to take the podium and provide any additional information or details that you deem relevant.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council and Council President. Briefly, I just wanted to summarize the project. The applicant is proposing to do a rezoning, partial, lots four and five of the 013 parcel and all of the second parcel, to permit a medical marijuana grow and processor within the Caesar Chavez overlay district. A couple of questions that came up at the previous meeting, one related to the history of the site. I was unable to determine the particular business that operated at that location, but there was a business, and that facility was demolished sometime around the late 80s, where the smaller parcel was the building, and the larger parcel existed a large parking lot. There were other questions about the permissibility of parking in the R1 district. We have, or at least the zoning ordinance does encourage or promote that. There are few scenarios where we would use that feature that would allow parking to support a non-residential use. We did it for the 640 West Tiron Webster School, where the properties owned by Oakland County, those parcels were permitted to be used for parking to support the school and their efforts. And there is significant buffering as related to landscaping between that parcel where parking would take place and what would be adjacent residential or homes. And then lastly, the portion in the front, or fronting Caesar Chavez, would be used for medical marijuana, as that corridor does support the M1 and C3 zoning districts, and then the rear would remain R1 residential. And if you have any further questions, I am here to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Goodman.
And just to re-bring this back up, this specific parcel, at least the M1, or if it gets approved, would be within the overlay district, correct?
Yes. The parcel currently, as it is, C3, is within the overlay district, so that would not change.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Rutherford and Pro Tem Carrington, then Councilwoman James.
So even if we changed the zoning, they still have to go before the clerk to do the rest of the procedure in order to be able to open, correct?
Correct. Following the decision on this matter, if it does go forward, they would have to apply and go through the process for a license through the City Clerk's Office. Then they would have to return back to the Planning Commission to complete a full site plan, and that would include the construction, the appearance of the facility, and the required landscaping between the parking lot and the residential properties.
Councilwoman.
So just point of clarity, we're just doing a vote on the rezoning. We're not telling them that they have been approved for the building. I just want to make sure we get that out there, because sometimes people misconstrue things, so I like clarity. So can you clarify what we exactly voted for today, just for the people in the back?
Understood. The resolution today is only to rezone lots four and five of the 013 parcel and all of the second parcel, strictly they rezoning, and it would not permit the occupancy or grant that license through this resolution. This is strictly to approve the rezoning.
Thank you.
Yes.
Pro Tem Carrington.
Oh, yes. Thank you, President. Again, I guess some of my concern is we just saw a gentleman come to us a couple of months ago, and he went beyond, for example, it was a public hearing, but no one showed up.
Yes.
So this gentleman went beyond, I know he doesn't have to, but he went beyond and went into that community and actually talked to the residents.
Yes.
And he came to this council. So I guess I'm a little, I guess myself, my concern is that I just don't think that we've done enough outreach in that particular community. You set a buffer behind the homes. What kind of buffer did you suggest from the Planning Commission that this project should incorporate?
The ordinance has a, the typical buffer is eight feet wide. It may or may not require a wall, and usually it does require, and I say usually because depending on various locations, this can change slightly, require shrubbery and trees. The buffer for residential parcels used for parking, I believe it is a 10-foot required buffer, and then it's maybe one or two more additional trees above the standard landscape buffer.
So the Planning Commission, what buffer did they require? Because I know you guys have the option of requiring some kind of a concrete buffer or some kind of tree line buffer.
Yes.
So what was the requirement for the Planning Commission?
When we took it to the Planning Commission for the preliminary site plan, we did not get into the specific detail of what that buffer would be, that being when it comes back for Planning Commission, site plan review, we would review it, and then they can make recommended changes to increasing the type of buffer or altering the trees or the masonry wall requirements.
All right.
Those would be revisited.
No further questions.
Councilman James, Deputy Mayor Stevens, Councilman Goodman.
I was wondering if you knew if the applicant had any kind of a track record as a grower? Is this their first entry into this business? Do they own comparable businesses in other cities?
We did not review the history of the applicant and their use in this field.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Stevens.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Smith and Clerk Doyle, if you could please just give a very brief history of, A, how we got here, how we're even taught, why we're even talking about this particular rezoning, but then, B, to specifically address the question of Councilman Carrington, if you could just say a little bit about the planning, actually, and also Councilwoman James, the function of the planning department and how you go about making these suggestions to council, and that being the fact of, you know, the question of, you know, do you have a detailed site plan? Well, no, and why you don't. And then also, you know, have you looked into the specific history of the applicant before asking about zoning changes?
Yes. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and to the council. I'll start with the second question, at least on how we got to this point. The responsibility of the planning is one to enforce compliance and interpret the zoning ordinance to applicants and those who wish to do business in the city. The first step is not always a full site plan review. This applicant, our first step was to go to the Planning Commission and acquire what we call a preliminary site plan approval. When we know a potential rezoning is coming later, followed by a site plan, we ask that the Planning Commission review the potential use, which would be a proposed marijuana grow facility, and if they are able to approve and in support of that use, then we would proceed with the public hearing, which is the rezoning, and then we can bring that rezoning here. If the Planning Commission does not approve a preliminary site plan, the applicant can still move forward with the zoning map amendment to change the zoning. However, it would be preluded by a denied preliminary site plan. When we look at zoning map amendments as a whole, we are determining, is that zoning district permissible in the context of that community or the district or corridor? In the sense of this project, we reviewed the Caesar Chavez corridor as a predominantly C3 commercial corridor, M1 and M2 corridor. So for those reasons, we felt it was permissible and appropriate, and in compliance with the Pontiac master plan to support this rezoning from C3 to M1. Furthermore, because it is also located within the Caesar Chavez overlay district, where we have made the determination through ordinance that we would like to see these uses located, for these reasons is why and how it came before the Planning Commission and City Council.
Clerk Doyle, anything further you'd like to elaborate?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing I would say from the Clerk's Office's standpoint is that, to me, it made more sense that the zoning is approved first, before someone submits an application. Why would we have people to submit applications, and they may not even get approved for zoning? So to make sure that the property is zone, properly zoned, and then they submit an application. So the Clerk's Office has not received an application from this company, so we have, I can't provide any other information as it pertains to that.
And if I may add, Council President, that is the standard process that our departments have worked out, that we acquire necessary zoning before you apply application, and that we acquire those preliminary site plans before we request the applicant go through the full financial expense of providing a complete site plan for a rezoning that may or may not be approved.
I believe next on the speaker's list was Councilman Goodman, then Councilman Parker.
So just to ask a clarifying question, would it be safe to say that the reviewing of the history of an applicant is outside of the purview of the planning department, and that information would then go to the Clerk's Office to further look into it, correct?
That would be correct. That specific detail is not one of the review criteria. The Planning Commission or members such as yourselves may request that information from the applicant in their presentations, but it is not a formal review criteria item.
And so to further ask, when it came to the previous applicant that we compare this to, with being the applicant from a couple of months back in the non-overlay, was it the planning department who did that further research, or again, was that something that was further looked into by the Clerk's Office?
So that is a slightly different rezoning. That is a conditional rezoning. This is not a conditional rezoning.
Right. And the conditional rezoning obviously requires the additional information to do so.
Yes.
Whereas in this case, with it being in the overlay district, which is what is originally planned for, that this falls into the purview of what would be considered, I guess, in your office, kind of like a routine set of processes to go through this?
That would be correct. And then, if I may further add, the conditional rezonings tie the potential use with the applicant and the plan itself. So if the applicant is unable to bring that proposed development to light, the rezoning wouldn't take place after a period of two or three years per those conditions, and it would revert back to its previous zoning district. For the standard rezonings, the reason why we don't get too much into the specific operations of the operator is because once that rezoning is completed, it is unrelated to that specific use, and is more so related to, as I mentioned, is that district appropriate where it is located.
So considering that the overlay district where this would be located is primarily commercial and light manufacturing, the changing of the zoning to light manufacturing, whether or not it be for this specific applicant, is the zoning that makes still the most sense in that general area. And again, it's because it's in the overlay district, it's a much simpler process with it already being set up.
That is correct. I know you said you work with grants, but you'll make a great planner.
So, thank you. That was really what I wanted to clarify, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilman Parker, Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, sir. Just have one question. Is there a term limit on the zoning if the property does not, if you don't build the property as stated?
The standard rezonings do not have a time limit. The conditional rezonings often come with a condition to revert back. So this one does not have a clause to revert back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pro Tem Carrington.
Oh, yes. I guess I want to make a clarifying statement. The only reason I brought up the last applicant, because that applicant went way beyond what was required. So that was my statement. I understand that it wasn't required of this particular applicant, but sometime applicants go way beyond to ensure that this community is okay with what's happening in this community. My other question is, is that what made you guys decide to make this just a regular change instead of make a conditional change?
So per the requirements of the zoning ordinance, staff is not able to provide conditions for a rezoning. So the applicant must-
Okay.
-understand what that conditional rezoning is, provide those conditions, and then we administer that through the process, through Planning Commission and City Council. Standard rezonings are strictly requests to amend the map from one zoning district to another.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Goodman.
And, sorry. Just to point out, I think it's also just really important to realize that I wish we could, again, ask for more things. Unfortunately, in this specific case, in a turn sharp, please tell me if I'm wrong, because of the nature of how the city is set up and how we have set up these overlay districts in our zoning, that because this is a essentially regular built-in process and not a conditional one, it would be unfair and really kind of abusing our powers as a government to say that with this specific, with this use specifically, in terms of this rezoning, we want to add conditions on to it. Whereas this is, again, setup process- Whereas this is, again, setup process, round the mill. So for us to do that would be going overboard in terms of power.
Legislative Councilor.
I was going to say, again, to piggyback off to, after, to piggyback off of what Mr. Smith said, I don't believe that they have the authority to do that anyway.
That would be correct. If I may, in the previous meeting, there was conversations about like sandwich boards and potential other options to provide community engagement. We can look at that and see what potential options are, such as newsletter mailers, emails, or other options such as those. But outside of those options, the requirements that we have to meet are the public notice, notice for 300 feet from the property and the legal posting in the Oakland press.
Councilman Goodman.
And, and don't be wrong, I also fully believe that we should be doing absolutely more to make sure that people have the ability to know that these things are happening. I agree with the sandwich board idea. I've actually brought that up to the mayor before. I think the real unfortunate thing is, again, we have to recognize the position that we are in as a, as this current city government in terms of what processes were and weren't set up and what we are capable of doing and not doing despite our desires, which is a very unfortunate thing, especially for me. But I just want to make sure that we are doing, obviously, the best we can to fight for the citizens of the city and to put our best foot forward and make sure that we're really fighting for the community, while also making sure that we are being fair and applying our rules and regulations to the people who are participating in a process that, again, may not benefit us the best, but is set up, and if they are following the rules, it is, again, kind of unfair to punish them for simply doing what we have laid out for them to do.
Yes. And then if I may add, those medical marijuana uses within the overlay districts, such as growing processes, do not have special exemption or public hearings associated with them. For those uses outside the overlay districts, they do have that special exemption requirement, which is why you may hear of those have more in-depth public hearings, because they may have a rezoning public hearing and a public hearing related to the special exemption also with the planning commission.
Thank you.
Councilman Rutherford.
If we start picking on all of these applications and all of this stuff, we are setting ourselves up for having issues, because what's good for the goose is good for the gander. We didn't do that to the other people. We can't start doing that now. And I understand people frustration, but I just want to be clear about that, because we already got people suing us for everything else, for this cannabis, marijuana, whatever you want, medicinal, whatever you want to call it, stuff. So I'm saying, sorry, not sorry. This is what's in place. Figure out what we can do later on, but we have to do our due diligence to do right and treat everybody fair so that everybody has an even keel, or we're going to be in so many lawsuits because of this. So it's basically a statement. I'm just saying, if the elephant in the room is, we gonna get sued. Somebody could say and say that we're showing prejudice about this and that, and we didn't do that to this and that, so if we wasn't going to do it from the beginning, we can't do it now. That's it.
Thank you.
Other discussion. Speaker's list exhausted. What we have now is the motion to adopt the resolution to approve the zoning map amendment that we've been discussing tonight and was discussed last week. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
No.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay.
That motion carries. Those parcels are hereby rezoned. We are now at public comment.
No, no.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Thank you very much for that. We tabled. So we're back at the resolution to approve the budget amendments. Director Carrington, you have the floor.
So I did confirm that the correct amount is the 25,750 figure. The annual contract was 309,000, and we needed one month of that. So the correct amount is 25,750 is the exact amount that's needed.
Thank you. So with that confirmation, we don't need to amend the matter before us? The therefore, be it resolved, the action item is correct, but if you'd like, we can update it in the whereas, just for the record. So Councilman Goodman, do you move to amend the whereases to reflect the same amount?
I would defer to the clerk.
Clerk Doyle, what say you?
Yes, the whereas should reflect the minor amount.
He recommends it.
So then I would go ahead with that.
Okay, so Councilman Goodman's moving to amend the whereas clauses to reflect the same amount that's in the resolved, which is the 25,750, which has been confirmed by staff as the appropriate amount. Is there a second?
Support.
It's been seconded by Councilman Nicholson. So what we have before us right now is just the amendment, tweaking the dollar amount to make sure they line up with reality. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing no discussion on the amendment, to update that figure in the whereas clause, roll call on the amendment. Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
The amendment carries. We're now at the main motion as amended. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution to approve the budget amendments, and the resolution stands as amended by the vote just taken. Roll call on adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We are now at public comment. President Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. First on public comment, Ms. Billy Swazer.
Good evening. My name is Billy Swazer. I live on Marsh Bank Drive in Pontiac. About 10 years ago, or when the emergency manager changed our districts, anyway, he had us voting. We had always voted at Kennedy Junior High or Kennedy High. He had us voting at a school that is on Kennett Street. It was very hard for us to vote. It was three different lines. We all had to vote, that was before absentee voting, because I wasn't 60 then, so I couldn't vote absentee, and I had to go and see the three different lines for the three different districts. Of course, after I voted, I went to Kennedy to see how many people were there. I went to the senior building on Johnson to see how many people were there, and I raised hell, because we could not, we didn't have the same consideration. We was all jammed up into the school on Kennedy, Kennedy, Kennett Road, when we could have been at Kennedy School. And I want to thank the city clerk for sending out my new voter registration card. I want to thank everybody who is in my district to please make sure you vote. If you haven't voted yet, you can go to the city clerk's office and get you an absentee ballot for no reason, and just vote. And it don't take but less than five minutes. So please vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Renee Beckley.
This is not to pick on anybody, but when you're wrong, you're wrong. This is not to support the person's opponent. Also, this is about Angela Powell, the county commissioner, having two jobs at the same time. If you're elected to be the Oakland County Commissioner and you serve the city of Pontiac, but yet you work for the mayor of the city of Pontiac as a public, I guess, relations person, liaison, or I'm not sure, title, something with the public relations dealing with the public. But she, I believe, I don't know if she's in the mayor's office or she's in this building. Now, this is from the attorney general's office, but this case happened with Bill Shute, but still the same law. Okay? This, this is what they send me. The Incompatible Public Office Act. And it's the general restrictions against public officers or employ, or employees that simultaneously holding incompatible offices. The act provides that a public officer or a public employee shall not hold two or more incompatible offices at the same time. MCL 15.182. Public offices held by a public official, which the official is performing the duties of any of the public office held by the officials, we source in any of the fallen respect of the office held. The subordination of one public office to another. So this is Angie to Tim. Tim is her supervisor. The supervision, which I just spoke of, of the public office by number to another. Tim supervised Angie. The breach of duty of the public office. So we have the sheriff's department. We have a contract with Oakland County. That Angie breaching her duty of Oakland County, she's serving two places. Pontiac and Oakland County. So if she has to vote something with the sheriff's department, she's in conflict. She has to choose one or another. Either you're going to choose that seal right there with that Indian, Pontiac, or you're going to choose the Oakland County tree, Angie Powell. I mean, you, you, this is my tax dollar, and I have the right to speak. You go hold your hands on your head, well, I did, and what you going to do about it? Your attitude, you know, I don't like your nasty attitude, but you're not going to be above the law. And you also, Michael McGinnis, you kind of on shake ground too. You serve Berkeley and Pontiac. But I don't have anything to say, because you don't have Berkeley's. If you got something with Berkeley coming up, you better step aside. So Angie, pick one. Either you're going to be here, Pontiac, or you're going to serve Oakland County. Basically, you breaking the law. And so, you know, I can, I'm going to report you, and you're going to have to choose one or another. It's not hate, but you know, wrong is wrong. Somebody else come behind you, they don't think they're going to do it too. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Darlene Clark.
Good afternoon, good evening. I'm actually speaking as a resident of Pontiac. I live in District One. I need to bring it to your attention. This has been brought to my attention. I am not running for any public office today, tomorrow, or in the future. It's not going to happen. I'm here acting as a resident in District One. I speak as a resident in District One, and I also speak as a residence for the city of Pontiac. Pontiac raised, period. So I'm not looking for nobody's position. I'm definitely not looking for doing anybody's job. Okay, so let's straighten that part out. I'm also having a little question. I don't want to elaborate on that, but this question is to the council and to the mayor and the deputy mayor as well, but mainly to the mayor. Knowing that Major DeJord Waterman had a position for eight years, and she did a lot of backdoor deals, and moving forward in your position and the people that you, that she had on her staff, you now have on your staff, are you going to investigate the corruption that you yourself say in so many words that the mayor has done, such as the E-Walk Center, the D-Walk Center, and other projects from the Phoenix Center? I mean, she's done so many things without the approval of council. The people wants to know, how are you going to handle this? And how can you move forward when you have this dark cloud still over you? And are any of those, any deals that she's done with the, with the approval of the attorney or signatures from, without the board's approval? Are they legible? I mean, are they legal? What, what, what's, how do you move forward doing anything today when yesterday is so corrupt?
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Gloria Miller.
Okay, that's it.
Okay. I didn't have any plans to come in this week, but, you know, I would listen to Mr. Russell. I worked with him many times too, over the years. Going to miss him. And you have to think about moments like that, what your leg is going to be. So I don't get up here and impress anybody. I speak from the heart, and I work for the people, and I don't ask for nothing in return, but just dignity and for rights and, so what I'm getting ready to say, take it personally, not personally, it doesn't matter, because right is just right. It's ironic that when I came in, we was talking about the kids and the youth. That's what I'm going to talk about tonight. Mr. Carrington, last week, I asked you about the Pontiac Panthers, and they out there selling water and stuff in the heat. And this mayor here got all this money. We got ARP money. We got, I see events all over this city every day, and those kids out there begging for money, begging for somewhere to play. And then we have the Pontiac Youth Assistant. I mean, the Pontiac Recreation Department, and they can't come here and get money, even though their parents pay taxes here, and those kids out in the street like this. And I said that to say this. Last week, my former colleague, Kermit Wee, received an award for giving money to his, Mr. Ray. So when you made your comment last week, you said you takes about $47,000 to run your program. So I said, okay. So maybe you didn't mean it that way, Mr. Carrington, but the way you said is like, eh, $10,000, you know, it's no big deal, you know, I need $40,000. My mother taught me that anything is better than nothing. You know, it's better than nothing. So with that being said, I did some investigating myself last week. And I called Mr., what is his name? Mark, with the neighborhood, Mark Looper, with the Neighborhood and Housing Director, because I actually called Mrs. Phillips, Lynette Phillips. And by the way, Mary, you can address my name. It's Gloria Miller. I'm not just member of the public. I don't have a high anything. I speak truth to power, and I just tell you right in your face. So when I was coming down and asking about that money, Mr. Looper informed me that he had met with the mayor and Lynette a couple of months ago, prior to this. I don't know, Mr. Carrington, if you're aware of this, about some indiscrepancies with that, with that money that, when I was in office, with, with the three organizations that received that money. Because I wanted to know why one got the money and mine and Pontiac Panthers had some. And they informed me that a lot of things was wrong on those applications, and so the Panthers probably won't be getting anything. Now, I want to make this public, and I want to make this clear, and I'm just going to call it out. Those kids going to get that $10,000. And, Mr. Carrington, I'm asking you, I don't want it to go to administrative fees. I want that money to go to the kids in, with uniforms. I don't care what kid, I don't care what color they are, as long as they are Pontiac, see, they are Pontiac kids. I do not want that money lost in the shuffle with administrative fee, because Mr. Looper informed me that some of the money, the grant was written, it was incorrect. They asking for gas and, and, and by the way, I want to put this out to the public. $1,800 you guys paid for out there to the field. Pontiac, no other got a field? Text me here, why can't they play over there? Why are our kids paying $1,800 for every game that they do at that field over there?
That does conclude your time.
So I'm asking you publicly, make sure that money goes to the kids and not, not, not even.
Well, thank you. Mr. Larry Jasper.
Thank you, counsel. So we talked about the Galloway Park, and there's been a big issue, what we can do as a city. Well, I guess we can just fall down, but the city can file a temporary restraining order. Any judge will issue it. Why? It's a real estate deal, which means it has a bundle of rights. Those rights include an easement, which was paid for a dollar. The rights are sold for a dollar, but what was the real value? Because those easements no longer allow a building to be built in the park. So who do we represent? The private, private stakeholder or the public stakeholder? According to 3113, like the mayor said in the city charter, must have, must have the city's council's approval. We know that didn't occur. And we know it must have been needed, because when the PLA, the parking lease agreement, was added to the global settlement agreement, the council was asked to vote on it. Now, why do you think that was? Because the attorneys knew the technicality that the council had to approve it. All the rights on the Phoenix Center parking structure are the rights of the private owners. The city has no rights, which means you can't lean against that property. You can't rent that property. You can't do anything with that property. You can't put a sign on that property. It's the rights of the leaseholder, which they pay $10 a year. So you need to do something to help the kids, and that's really, really important. So you need to do something to help the kids, and that's really, really important. Because without parks, you don't have the entertainment. You don't want to spend a bunch of money doing a bunch of different things. Sorry, it wasn't in there. The forensic audit, I want to bring this up one more time about confidentiality. You're going to have closed-door sessions. You can't have closed-door sessions on public information. The public stakeholders, the citizens, the taxpayer, they need to know what's going on. You guys can't afford to do that. And just example of what was going on, five one 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 Woodward, supposedly in the Global Settlement Agreement, was sold for ten point seven million dollars. Hmm. Purdue was sold for six hundred thousand, but closing to the closing statement, it was only sold for three point eight million dollars. So why is that? Because the information was given by the city, which left a deficit or a difference of six point nine million dollars. Where'd it go? Six, we add that in, that's seven point five million. Urban Development of Michigan told the city they must give them seven point seven million dollars upfront before they did the GSA. I guess that's seven point seven million dollars, guys. Maybe you might want to look into that before you continue to go with the Global Settlement Agreement. Maybe you want to read your contracts to know what's in it, because it's not benefiting the public stakeholder. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public comment of President McGinnis.
We are now at Council Communications. The Pontiac School District Carpool Cinema Movie Night showing Encanto, July twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two, starting at sunset. Free event held at Pontiac School District Odell Nails Administration Building Parking Lot, four seven two zero zero Woodward Avenue in Pontiac. Oakland County's Historical Society has their fifty-third annual Summer Ice Cream Social, a free event on July thirtieth and thirty-first this coming Saturday and Sunday from twelve to four P.M. each day, held at their Oakland History Center at four oh five Cesar Chavez Avenue in Pontiac. Election Day is Tuesday, August second. Polling locations are open seven A.M. to eight P.M. Please contact the City Clerk's Office for more information. And as a result of that election day, there is no City Council meeting next Tuesday, August second. Due to Election Day, the next Pontiac City Council Meeting is Thursday, August fourth, two thousand twenty-two, at six P.M. here in the council chambers. The City Council's Outreach Specialist Position remains posted. Oakland County Tax Foreclosure Auction is conducted online this year. Advanced bidding is now open through August twelfth, and on that day, the active bidding process begins. You can find out more information at tax-sale.info online. And for those interested builders, bidders without internet access, a phone bidding system is available by calling eight hundred two five nine seven four seven zero. For more information, visit tax-sale.info or contact Oakland County Treasurer Robert Wittenberg's office by phone at two four eight eight five eight zero six one one or email treasurer@oakgov.com. The, this year's Pride and Beautification Awards for the city of Pontiac nominations are still open, and forms are available at Pontiac City Hall, the council offices, on the city's website, at the council webpage, or in the chambers this evening if you'd like some. E-Community Outreach Services Family Appreciation Day, August twentieth, from twelve to five P.M., free event held at UWM Sports Complex at eight sixty-seven South Boulevard East in Pontiac. Pontiac Transportation Museum has an open house during the Woodward Dream Cruise, August twentieth, from one to five P.M., and that's at two fifty West Pike Street in Pontiac. Pontiac School District Carpool Cinema Movie Night showing Space Jam Legacy, August twenty-fifth, starting at sunlight, sunset. It's a free event held at the school district's Odell Nails Administration Building Parking Lot, same address announced as before. Oak Hill Cemetery Walk, September eighteenth, walking tours at two, three, and four P.M., held at the city's Oak Hill Cemetery, two sixteen University Drive in Pontiac. We are now at Mayor's Office Communications. Mayor Vrymel.
Thank you very much, President McGinnis. Few items. Number one, as I've done at past city council meetings, I want to make sure that we're getting word out about the city's Lawn Chair Concert Series coming to a neighborhood near you in the very near future. The next event is this Thursday, July twenty-eighth, at six thirty P.M. at J.C. Park on the city's north side, featuring Accent Pontiac and Poncho Villa's Skull. Following that, we have another Lawn Chair Concert Series event on August eleventh, also at six thirty P.M. at the Oakland History Center at four oh five Cesar Chavez, featuring Paula Michelle and Quincy Stewart. Followed on August twenty-fifth at six thirty P.M. at Murphy Park, featuring Jill Marie Hamilton. That's going to be followed on September eighth by the next event in the Lawn Chair Concert Series. That's going to be at Charlie Harrison Park, five thirty-seven University Drive, featuring Gwen Fox. Followed, last but not least, on September fifteenth at six thirty P.M. at Rotary Park, featuring an, as yet unannounced artist, but I, I think unannounced, but I can assure the public that they will not be disappointed by this stellar and famous and Grammy nominated musical artist. In addition, I want to again mention that as we enter the final four weeks of the Summer Youth Recreation Program, that we continue to allow enrollees to sign up. We are now at seven hundred ninety-eight enrollees, so just shy of eight hundred enrollees. For those who know or have young people interested in enrolling, you can go to pontiacrecreation.recdesk.com. That's pontiacrecreation.recdesk.com, or you can call two four eight seven five eight three zero three seven. That's two four eight seven five eight three zero three seven. Our next Planning Commission Meeting is next week, Wednesday, August third, at six o'clock P.M. right here in Pontiac City Hall Council Chambers. And then we have a few additional brunch and community conversations with the mayor coming up. The next one is not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, August sixth, from eleven A.M. to one P.M. at the Pontiac Kappa House at two hundred Earlmore. That will be followed in September by a brunch and community conversations with the mayor on September tenth, from eleven A.M. to one P.M. at the Ruth Peterson Center. And then the October brunch and community conversations with the mayor will be October eighth, from eleven A.M. to one P.M. at the Bowen Center. And these are opportunities to come by, stop in. You don't need an appointment, but it's a free-flowing conversation with me. Feel free to come, ask any question that you've got. Feel free to express any concerns, comments, suggestions that you have, and you will be served a robust, very hearty brunch as well. So we look forward to seeing you at one of these events in the near future. That's all I have at this time. President.
With that, Mayor Vrymel, your closing comments.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. So a few comments, and this is certainly in recognition of some of the public comments that we've heard tonight. I'm certainly familiar with the Incompatible Offices Act. Both the city's attorney and the county's attorney determined with no ifs, ands, or buts that a county commissioner working for the city in the capacity of community relations does not violate the Incompatible Offices Act and does not present any other conflict of interest either. There is not a single attorney, whether the Attorney General or any other position, that has deemed that position to be a conflict of interest or in violation of the Incompatible Offices Act. Regarding the past administrations' bad practices, they're exactly that. They're, they're bad practices by the previous administration. We have moved on from some personnel that was in place under the previous administration. But we continue, of course, to review all practices that were conducted by the past administration. We continue to review all contracts that the past administration had in place, and we continue on an ongoing basis to review all of our staff here at City Hall, and in particular, those staff in place under the previous administration. I want to emphasize that one of the things that we're looking forward to receiving in the very near future is the review and report from the forensic auditors, and that may shed some additional light on any past practices under the previous administration and on past staff at City Hall, as well as potentially current staff at City Hall. So we look forward to receiving the report from the forensic audit. In regard to a Mark Looper with, I guess, the Pontiac Panthers, I'm not familiar with the person by that name. To my knowledge, I have never met with a person by that name. We do have an RFP out right now that's posted on the city's website for any organizations that would like to participate with the city's youth recreation program in the fall, and any interested organizations are encouraged to submit a proposal pursuant to that RFP that is on the city's website. We encourage them to do so very soon because that RFP is out there through this Friday, July twenty-ninth, and so any proposals need to be submitted by this Friday, July twenty-ninth, from any organizations interested in participating with the city's Fall Youth Recreation Program. In addition, I want to emphasize that we have posted now twenty-six jobs with the city of Pontiac. So we encourage especially residents who are interested in applying to apply for any of these jobs that they're qualified for and interested in. They can find those jobs on the city's website. So please apply. We are very eager, very interested in hiring more qualified Pontiac residents. In addition, we have some exciting events coming up here in the city this Friday. Of particular note is that the art exhibition Bonded will be at Gallery Forty-Six as part of the grand opening of Gallery Forty-Six. That is this Friday, July twenty-ninth, from four o'clock to seven P.M. at forty-six North Saginaw. The after-party for that opening will be from nine P.M. to midnight this Friday, and it will involve a performance by Pontiac's very own Ro Spitt. A pop-up store, shoe store, by Ro Spitt will be opening up that day and will be open for a month after that. That'll be on East Lawrence Street. And also on East Lawrence Street will be an art exhibit by Gerhart Knodel, also opening this Friday, July twenty-ninth. In addition, we will be breaking ground on the Hidden River Plaza improvements on August twelfth. We anticipate that those improvements will take about two to three weeks, and so around the end of August or early September, we anticipate the grand opening of Hidden River Plaza in downtown Pontiac. We will have a special event to commemorate the grand opening of the new and improved Hidden River Plaza downtown in District One, and we'll certainly, as we know more details about that, get the word out about that. And then lastly, as was announced earlier this evening, we are really excited about the fact that Congressman Andy Levin has secured three point two million dollars for the city's Bagley Road and Gulf Drive Road improvements, and we're very, very grateful to Congressman Levin's hard work in securing that in the House bill. We are reaching out and already talking with our U.S. senators about making sure that those funds pass the U.S. Senate as well. I want to acknowledge Ms. Boren-Gessers' hard work in working with Congressman Levin and his staff in helping to secure this three point two million dollars for our city in terms of fixing and improving both Gulf Drive and Bagley Street beginning next year, but we need to make sure that the funding passes the Senate. We do have a press conference announcing this exciting award and its passage through the U.S. House this Friday at ten A.M. at the Bowen Center. So feel free to come out as part of that press event and celebration of this important progress of that over three million dollars in federal funding for Pontiac.
City Clerk Garland Doyle, your closing comments.
Mr. President, there is a Charter Commission Meeting this Thursday, July twenty-eighth at six P.M. The Charter Commission will meet in the city council chambers. The commission has set the fourth Thursday of the month as its regularly scheduled monthly meetings. The clerk's office will be open both this Saturday, July thirtieth, and Sunday, July thirty-first, from ten A.M. until four P.M. for absentee voting. Absentee voting ends on Monday, August the first, at four P.M. That's the last opportunity for you to get an absentee ballot. If you've already received your absentee ballot, you have up until eight P.M. on Election Day, August second, to turn your ballot in. Ballot drop boxes will be open through August first. Again, the primary election is Tuesday, August second. Polls will be open from seven A.M. until eight P.M. Voters should have received their new voter registration card. Make sure that you go to your new assigned polling, a location to vote, and that was also identified in the city clerk's newsletter as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Doyle, and thank you for having your offices and operations open on both Saturday and Sunday this coming weekend. That's very, very proactive. We are now at closing comments for city council members. Councilman Rutherford, District One.
Oh, yes. My quote for the day is, back then, they didn't want me. Now I'm hot, they all on me. That was Mike, Big Mike, who used to be a rapper, famous in Houston. And the reason why I say that is, there was a time when people used to dump on the city of Pontiac. They would say how it's bad and how we don't have any future and how it's not good to do business here, but we are changing that each week by being open to things that challenges our beliefs and challenges our thought process. And that does not happen without coming to a place where even if we don't get along with people, we have to be respectful of everyone. I am learning that every week. I wish that that respect that we show here is shown out in the community more, because what bothers me is, is that when will the hate stop? When will it stop? Is it going to stop when somebody confronts you? Is it going to stop when you got to deal with the, with the things that you say? When is it going to stop? It, it's just amazing to me how we are doing so many things, so many grants, so many opportunities, so many jobs, and every week it's the same rhetoric about what we not doing. And it bothers me because I'm forty-three years old, and I, I have many reasons to be mad at the world, but I'm happy and I'm filled with hope that we can change this community. And the question then, because when are you going to be happy? When you dead? You got one life to live, and if you spending your whole life hating on everything, I mean everything, and then get afraid when you get called out on it because you think your behavior is acceptable, but everybody ain't going to accept how you talk to them. Everybody ain't going to keep letting you cross that line. It's called a gray line. You understand? And the reason why I said it is, is because sometimes people don't understand that some of us live, breathe, and will die for the city of Pontiac. That's how much I love the city, and so it bothers me that every week I get a call, not about people in my age group, who you would expect people to act, but older people who act like they don't have common sense or emotional intelligence. You don't have to like the leadership, but you got to respect leadership. You don't have to like the decisions, but you got to respect that we're making decisions. And at some point, you can keep making rumors in the windows. It doesn't bother me because I'm confrontational, and everybody knows that. But I am tired of every week having to defend this city that I love from people who live in the city that they say they love. On another note, I have my District One meetings on July the thirtieth from eleven to one at the Alley Cat. Everybody welcome, even people who don't particularly like me. I don't care, just show up. And I say that because I'm, like, we got to get to a place where we got to get past what we don't like about each other and get to a place where we actually are being the forefront, the focal point of what's important, man. I just want to have one week where we talk about the positive things and we focus on that, because kids do be watching, and we are sometimes the laughingstocks of other communities. And I don't understand why that Mike make people so hype to disrespect themselves, their family, and their community. I know my time, but I go over, I see it. That's my time. Thank you for trying to correct me, but I got it. At the end of the day, respect is given, and it has to be earned. And so that's all I'm asking you to do, just respect the city of Pontiac. That's it. Have a good evening.
Councilman Brett Nicholson. Councilman Brett Nicholson, District Two.
Uh, there is so much happening. If you drive around District Two right now, uh, there are roofs being repaired, there are kids playing in the streets, there are new families moving in. Um, you know, in the 10 years that I've lived in Pontiac, I've never seen so much action and young families and new life in my district. Uh, want to uh, put out a, a warning to residents that just because you pick, you, you, you take out the no parking sign, doesn't mean that the street is now able to be parked on. They will still ticket you, they will still tow you. So just because you take the side railing off of a dock, doesn't mean that that is now a boat mooring location. We uh, the, the reality is the more that you continue to damage the dock, the dock may not be replaced. So we, we, if we want nice things, we have to take care of our nice things. So when we continue to repair these things and replace the signs, i- it's just going to mean more enforcement, or you lose the privilege. So we really have to hold each other accountable when, you know, we see our neighbor sawing parts of a dock off because it's easier for him to park his boat there. We, at some point, the dock's gonna go away because we can't continue to replace that dock. So as we, as, as, as these things happen, or, or if you find out that the, that the mobile home uh, that is next to yours is dumping sewage into a lake, you can't live next to the sewage being dumped into the lake. I get we have street codes and we all wanna be able to live friendly next to each other, but, but this is important. This is a matter of public safety and public health. If you know of these things that are happening, please be a part of the solution, um, rather than standing idly by and letting it continue to keep people at risk or in danger. We want to be able to resolve these matters and be able to have nice things that every person in the community can enjoy, but if we continue to damage them, those things will likely be taken away. Um, so I hate to be, have the dad talk, but, but that's, that's how it feels sometimes. Um, but you know, it, you drive down uh, my street, just today, there were three roofs being repaired. Full roof, full roof repairs on historic houses. That's tremendous, a tremendous amount of investment into these homes, uh, to people who have lived there for their entire lives, people, senior citizens. What's that? They are all permitted, yes. And they are, and these are cedar shake under, you know, underlay that are all being completely uh, remain intact. It's, it's nice to see. Um, but uh, we, um, we took a break for, for this last month for our District Two meetings. We are back in August 4th, Monday, um, at Goldner Walsh, seven o'clock. Come see us. Uh, we don't have um, the agenda built yet, but there's always somebody exciting and good information uh, to grab at that meeting.
I thought you were gonna go in a different direction about those roofs and the permits. So that's good news, progress.
No, hey, hey, and, and if you can't, if, well, that's a good point, right? So when you live in a historic district, there's some expectations for upkeeping your historic house. Um, but if there is a, if, 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 if it comes down to I ca, I, I either can or can't replace the roof, have that conversation with, with the building and safety department and the planning department. They do have creative opportunities and op, and, and options for people. Um, we've had that happen in the last couple of weeks where people have come in and said, I bought all the materials, what do I do now? Um, we have answers to those questions. So stop by, come see us, and we'll be able to point you in the right direction.
Thank you. District Three, Councilman McHale Goodman.
Good evening, everyone. So the first thing I'm gonna say is, as a person who does uh, political work and does election-based work, I cannot stress the importance of going out to vote on August 2nd at your polling location. Please go out and vote. Pontiac is unfortunately one of the lowest voter turnout cities in the state of Michigan. And I would love for that to change. As a city with a history as rich as our city and uh, with people who have fought uh, for this democracy, I, I think it's extremely important that we as a city get a better culture about voting. And of course, this is me doing my part to encourage everyone, especially those in my district, to go vote. Um, with that, uh, and clerk, I will depend on you to correct me if I'm wrong. Um, the two vote, vote locations in District Three are, as they were last election cycle, Walt Whitman and Alcott. And that means I need to clarify that the polling location is not the Baldwin Center anymore. I know many people were accustomed to that my, uh, during the primary when I voted, that was my polling location. It then moved. So to make sure that you are aware, um, your polling location will not be at the Baldwin Center. It will be either at Alcott or Walt Whitman. Um, I, I, I'm extremely excited, you know, going through uh, my district, making more and more connections uh, that I am given the ability and chance to make. Um, there will be hopefully a new uh, in-district location for uh, our District Three meetings, uh, likely somewhere on Baldwin. Um, so I, I, I look forward to solidifying that and of course, having that first meeting, uh, first inaugural meeting in the district actually, uh, in this location coming soon. And then uh, in terms of what I am actually doing, this is the, well, one of the few times that I will mention that I will actually be speaking uh, this Friday at a, a rally happening in downtown Pontiac uh, for the congressman. I'm not gonna go into any campaign stuff, but of those of you who would like to have the opportunity to meet some amazing people like Senator Bernie Sanders, as well as, you know, having the opportunity to hear your councilperson speak, I do really uh, encourage everyone who is involved in any type of civic nature to come out. It's always good to, to learn more, and I think it's extremely important. Plus, have the time to spend in our downtown. Many people don't really go downtown anymore and really giving them the opportunity to, to see what's happening down there, give a chance to go to places that we have in, in that area, rest, great restaurants and amazing bar. Um, so of course, in this next week or so, there are a lot of things happening around voting, so just across the board, please vote. It, it is one of the more simple things that you can do, whether it be at the polls, from your own home with absentees, in the clerk's office, which uh, the clerk uh, has his hours posted uh, in terms of absentee voting. So uh, above all, everyone, please go vote uh, next Tuesday, August 2nd. Awesome.
Councilwoman Kathleen James, representing District Four.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Uh, I want to remind our District Four residents that we, our, the Arts Commission Concert Series will take place in District Four this coming Thursday, uh, July the 20, 28th. Uh, it will be in the J.C. Park, starting at 6:30, and it will feature uh, the um, uh, what's the name of the group?
Accent Pontiac.
Accent Pontiac will be there in a.
Poncho Villa.
Poncho Villa. Okay. Poncho Villa. So we are excited about it. I will be there uh, to introduce the groups and to meet Pontiac residents. So please, if you're on tonight, please come out, bring your lawn chair, and enjoy the Lawn Chair Series uh, of the uh, Pontiac Arts Commission. Also, uh, we've got some great things happening in, in District Four, and we'll be sharing with, those with you at a later date. But just wanna make a, a quick comment about the Elizabeth Dennison IV mural that's going up downtown. It's absolutely, it is absolutely beautiful. And I think it really, when it's done, will establish our city. Uh, you know, you, you look at what, what is Pontiac known for? And there are a lot of negative things that this city is known for throughout Oakland County. Uh, but I think what we really need to do is focus on what our real niche is. And I think we, we've struggled with that for a long time. But our, our, one of our strongest niches is our history. And if we would really, you know, get our arms around how rich the history is here in Pontiac, you know, the fact that we approved uh, having the name change for Frank Russell, you know? Unheard of to have a family with that many professional basketball players in one family, the Russell family, and they lived in Pontiac on Earlmore Street. So I mean, this is history. And Pontiac has so much wonderful history that we really need to be able to learn how to, how to work that history because it, it, it's, it's a great history, and if we would really use it in our own best interest, I think it could make our city a great city. Thank you.
Councilman William Parker Jr., District Five, your closing comments.
Thank you, Brother President. Uh, before I go, I, I wanted to thank uh, all of those who came to the community event scheduled at the New Springfield Missionary Baptist Church. They had a lovely community picnic. I wanna thank the Oak Street Health uh, Community, specifically Sister Melanie Rutherford for arranging for her staff to come out and, and help us out. We wanna thank the Bernstein Clinic for coming and offering vaccines for COVID. We wanna thank the Army for coming out and sharing and trying to get some young men involved and active in their activities. We wanna thank uh, the, the county for their donations and helping us have a nice time out in the, out in the uh, the community at 124 Prospect Avenue. I say that because I believe I was accused of uh, compromising church and state. Uh, I am unapologetically a pastor, but I've never tried to invite anybody to, and take anybody into church from this podium, from this place. I do announce things that are community activities from my church. I think I have a right to do that. And I think that uh, that as I go forward, we'll continue to be able to do that. The New Springfield Missionary Baptist Church is a community church. It's open to all districts, it's open to all colors, race, creed, and colors. You can come and be satisfied there. I believe if you come, you might hear a good word. But come on, and, and come on by and see what we do, instead of complaining about what we're calling and inviting people to. Wanted to say that. So I wanna thank everybody who made our community picnic a, a good and great success. I wanna thank the mayor for all those things and, and the deputy mayor for all the things that, that we, they continue to do, but I'm gonna tell you right now, um, please, but I'm not happy. Because I've been, I believe, uh, prior to about going out of, out of state, back before the first of July, I left a list of things that needed to be done specifically in Perry and Galloway. One was the grass cutting on Perry, Perry from the Rubber Road Overpass up to Walton, actually. And I said that because if you look at Perry from Mount Com, MLK, you'll find that on the east side of the street, there is no sidewalk. And so you have to either walk in the street or walk on the grass. And if you don't cut the grass, people gonna walk in the street, and that's a safety hazard. So again, I would ask that we would take a look at the, not only the Rubber Road Overpass, but the passage of, the pass after Gettings Road up to Walton Road on the left side, there's three bus stops that the weeds are over, way over eight inches tall, and we need to cut it. Also Perry Pontiac Road to the Auburn Hills Line, somebody needs to cut those weeds. Also on uh, the grass on Gettings and Walton, that corner there, where there used to be somebody was planning on building something there, nobody's done anything, but the grass needs to be cutted. And also on Gettings down to the Auburn City, Auburn Hills City Line. Uh, we wanted, so there's that. There's the trees that are overhanging in the streets and keeping people from seeing on fieldstone. Those things have been reported. But the other part is I hear all the conversation about, oh, I'm out of time, thank you.
You can finish your thought.
Okay. Last thought. As we have been talking about Galloway, I wish, I know previously, previously early in our, one of our meetings, we talked about the condition of the docks at all of our, at all of our parks. Galloway is no exception. It needs to be looked at, it's very rickety. Um, one of the end pieces have already come off and people are risking safety if we don't look at it. So I would ask that someone would come by and take a look and see what can be done with the dock at Galloway. I wanna remind everybody of the August 11th meeting of the uh, District Five CDC at 6:00 PM. All are invited, and we would love to have the, the previous council member, councilman come and share with us how to make our community and our district better. Thank you so, so much. Have a great evening, Pontiac.
Representing District Six, President Pro Tem, William A. Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. And just so I, I make this known, that uh, District One is not the best district in the city of Pontiac, District Six is. Uh, and since you, they removed half of downtown out of District Six, which I, just overnight, so I don't understand what happened. But uh, that's, that's my personal complaint. Um, just wanna make a few statements concerning the Pontiac Panthers, uh, first and foremost. Um, I'm not the president of the Pontiac Panthers, but I am a board member. Uh, and we greatly appreciate anytime anybody make a donation to the, financial donation to the Panthers, we definitely appreciate it. My statement surrounding what it costs to run the season is based on me making sure the community knows exactly how much it costs uh, to run a football season. Um, so again, I'd like to thank uh, Ms. Gloria Miller in the past council for approving the $10,000 for the Pontiac Panthers. Uh, the information that came from the city upon receive, upon receiving that requires us to do an invoice-type payment plan. So for example, once things happen, we send an invoice to the city to get, to get repaid. So it's, it's not as simply as us getting a $10,000 check from the city of Pontiac. It's not that simplistic. I wish it was, but it's, it's definitely very complicated. Uh, so as soon as we able to do invoices to the city of Pontiac, we would do, make those invoices. Or the president would make those invoices to the city. Uh, I just wanna close with one, I like to remain, always remain in the positive regardless of what I do in life. I think that my positivity has definitely um, served me well in my 56 um, years of life. Uh, so it's a comment, I don't, I don't know who actually made this comment, but it's a comment, and I think it's uh, very prevalent for where we at in the city of Pontiac right now. Designing a dream city is easy. Rebuilding a living one takes imagination. So it's imperative that we stop using old ways to do things and look for ways to be, be, to actually imagine something greater. And when I see some of the murals uh, throughout the city, they very thought-provoking, thought-provoking, and they actually beautiful. Uh, and I've seen what the city of Flint done in the same, same breath with all, all this art around the city, the city and the citizens embrace this. It's a very positive thing. Um, so I just wanna commend uh, all these great artists that are working on these murals in our city. Art is beautiful. Art defines a city. And it's definitely bringing attention to downtown and to parts of the city that we need people visiting and looking at these murals. When I go to Flint, when I go to Chicago, when I go to Philadelphia, I sort out the art of that city. I take pictures of that art of those cities and I share it to all my friends on Facebook, to all my family. So this is, this is a beautiful thing, and, and I definitely uh, uh, thank those artists and especially Councilwoman James who got a jump on us and getting, and getting that artist. And I was, I was being slumber, and, and she got a jump on me, but I definitely think it's beautiful and good night.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mike McGinnis, District Seven. Lucky District Seven, the district for the grown and the sexy folk. Uh, we are honored uh, that you get to join us every week in District Seven, right here for City Hall. We are in District Seven, the luckiest and grownest and sexiest of all districts. Um, the, uh, meeting has been long. I'm hungry. Um, and so I'll be very brief just to say, this coming weekend, uh, Saturday and Sunday, July 30th and 31st, there's a free event, it was included in the communications. Um, it's our annual Summer Ice Cream Social at the Historical Society. So that is in District Three. The, the wonder, uh, the, many acronyms, many adjectives, amazing District Three. You can come to District Three this Saturday or Sunday from noon to four for our um, Summer Ice Cream Social at the Historical Society. It is free and open to all. That free admission includes free ice cream. Um, so I'm gonna leave my colleagues with some of those vintage coasters printed, so you can remind yourself, but also spread the word. Uh, but please come, one and all. Uh, so much activity, live music, uh, food truck vendors, all sorts of activities. All of the historic facilities are open uh, for tour. There are new exhibits uh, that spotlight Pontiac's history, and I'm really grateful for my colleagues' comments about uh, the richness of our history, our arts and our culture, and how that is a, a signature aspect of our community. And it is a really alluring, it's a, it's a real magnetic reason uh, for our community to flourish. So, what's that?
I'm gonna try to wait, cuz I can't hear you for those people talking, because you repeat what you just did, cuz I can't hear you, the other people talking.
Well, um, come out this weekend to the Summer Ice Cream Social, noon to 4:00 PM, July 30th and 31st, and thank you for that. We uh, will conclude now with a motion to adjourn.
The board.
It's been moved by, I've already, by Goodman, seconded by Rutherford. I wanna point out again, our next meeting is not a Tuesday, it's a Thursday, August 4th, which is also the day after the Brett Nicholson's birthday.
Yes.
So um, it'll be birthday season uh, next week for us. Hearing no discussion on adjournment, the motion before us, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Good evening. Yes.
Jane.
Yes.
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 I almost said no.
I almost said no.
Yes.
That's where the heck.
That was seven yeas, the motion carries were adjourned at 9:45 p.m. Thank you all.